All right, good evening, everyone. It's just after seven. I'm going to start unmuting the planning board. And I'm going to be admitting people into the waiting room as we go. So I am now unmuting Heather Hannan and Heather Von Mering. And I know Maureen had just entered. All right, Maureen. Maureen, Heather and Heather, would you see if the audio is working? Can you say hello?
Hello.
Okay, it looks like we got everyone there.
All right, so we have a quorum. So I'm going to begin because we're going to be tight on time today if we don't. It is 7:02 on Tuesday, May 12. Sorry about that. And so on top of that, we are have a tight agenda today. We're going to open with some business we need to take care of and then go into dealing with the Abbey Road tri-party agreement, the town meeting articles at 7:15, and move into 10 Converse Place and 654 Main Street, which I anticipate we will get a lot of the participants that are on the Zoom call are here to view that presentation, provide comments and feedback. We will be opening it up to feedback from the public during that time. And we'll go through the process of how to do that during that time period, and we'll work through that. To begin with some updates, I believe everyone on the planning board is a town meeting member. All the meeting is proceeding forward, and we will be talking about town meeting articles. They're looking at remote participation. The town is looking to do significant budget cuts throughout in all departments and all areas of the budget to address the state anticipating a huge deficit coming in. So that'll be a big issue that's coming up in town meeting, which will impact the planning board and our ability to do what we do. The town manager has changed her updates to weekly. You can get those at winchester.us. Also, for everyone here, Brian will go through and list everyone who we can identify who is on this call. So you all know for those who are on the phone. And what else was I going to say? Today's been, I think that's good for now. Brian, do you want to go through the list of everyone who is on the participants, who are currently on the call by identifying themselves? So we can record.
Yep. This is who I have. Ted Tolukey and Ian Gillespie, John Copley, David Hossain, Larry Murray, Kurt James, Art Krieger, Colleen Soden, Quinn Simpson, Heather Hannan, Jillian Berger, Maureen Meister, Jan Steenbrugge, Grisnet Cologne, John Clemson, and Anne Marie Brecko. And then there are Kelsey McLean. And then the only one that I'm not aware of, but there's no audio there yet, is M. Cantu. M. C. A. N. T. U. But everyone else has been identified before I came, before they allowed them in to the waiting room. I'm also going to try again, I'm going to go off for just a second. I'm going to try to get Betsy on the call. I just talked with her, but I'm going to try to, it seems like she hasn't, she's not on yet. So I think it makes most sense if we were going to go directly. I could do some updates, but I think we're already getting a little behind. I think it makes a little bit of sense to go directly, if possible, to potentially turn it over to Art Krieger Town Council. We go directly into the Abbey Road tri-party agreement.
Sounds good. If we have time at the end, we can go through any updated updates as well at the end of the meeting. I just also want everyone to know who is on this Zoom meeting that it is being recorded. WinCam is one of the participants, and they record this, and they do show it on television. So you are being recorded, and just if you know that. All right, let's go into Abbey Road. Can you unmute Art, please? Which is town council.
Good evening.
Hi, Art. Thank you for joining.
Yeah, could you, could you unmute Jillian Berger as well? My associate?
Let's see if he can.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What was that, Art?
Unmute Jillian as well.
Sure, I will do that right now.
And, and I'm not getting any video. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. We don't do video of all of us staring at our screens. We show.
Okay.
Hey, everyone. Jillian Berger here.
Hi, Jillian. Jillian.
What's that?
Would you like to write your party?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm getting, I'm getting.
I'm back.
I'm back now. Put anything up in that you'd like. Someone has their volume on very, very high.
Yeah, I was getting, I'm getting a lot of feedback from Heather.
Okay, well, it looks like that's, I'll mute her for the moment. So Art, tell me what you'd like me to bring up. I have all the information right here, so we can kind of move with this.
Okay. Good evening, members of the board and everyone else. So Kurt James, who is already also on the call, who's Five Points Development's attorney. And I and Jillian negotiated the tripartite agreement over the past several weeks. I sent it to you. I sent you the agreed version through Brian. And then I also sent you an email explaining the high, the key points of it. And then I sent you an email about waivers, which are a separate email, a separate motion, but the language will be incorporated into the tripartite if you approve the waivers, if you pass the motion. And then another motion, reducing the amount of the tripartite agreement from the one that you looked at in March, which was 108,000 and change, 108,000 rounded off, to 91,000 and change, which is the figure that you have in front of you tonight. The concept is the same as it was, which is that on the sale of any of the first three lots, so you conditionally release three lots in April, on April 7. On the sale of any of those, because we think they'll be sold together, but we're not sure. That is the Five Points and its council is not sure. 65,000 will be put in escrow toward the punch list, an estimate that engineering department put together. And on the sale of the fourth lot, whether it's with the fifth lot or just by itself, another 26,000 and change, making the total of 91 and change, will be put in escrow with Rockland Bank, which is the third party to the tripartite agreement. So none of that, none of that has changed, except the amount came down a little bit based on further work and further inspections by engineering from the 108 to the 91. So that, as I said, that's, that's the subject of a motion. The, the difficulty in negotiating this or drafting it has been that the regulations seem to contemplate, and the parties contemplated early on, that Craig Miller would subdivide and build houses and sell houses. He, instead, he is selling the lots, as is his right. But that required thinking through how the timing of the various work was going to be done. As I, as I said in my email, some of the work really should be done after the deadline for, for the basic deadline of April 30, 2021, for the completion of the punch list work. But some of the work should be done after that. It should be done after the houses are built, because it's, it's, some of it is repair items, and some of it is paving and related work, which could be damaged by the heavy trucks for the house construction. We talked about this last time. I know you're familiar with this issue. So in paragraph nine, paragraph eight sets out to the April 30, 2021 deadline. Paragraph nine says, notwithstanding that, certain things will have different deadlines. And it's what may look like an odd deadline. It's the certificate of occupancy for the third house. The reason, as I said in my email, is that if we said the fifth house, which is what you contemplated in March, the last CO, there's no guarantee the fifth house would be built. Could be four houses and somebody but buys the next lot as well and make, and has a tennis court or a swimming pool. Or it could be just, they don't all sell, and so not all the houses get built. So you can't have the deadline keyed just to the CO for the fifth house. Fourth house is a little less risky, but still somewhat risky. So we landed on the third house. That is, the third certificate of occupancy is what triggers the remaining work that can't be done by that April 2021 deadline. Or I should say, probably won't be. If the houses are built very quickly, all the work could get done by then, but probably not. So the idea was to have it with an event that we think will almost certainly happen. The third certificate of occupancy is the trigger for that work, but not earlier than that. Because if it's earlier than that, if only one house has been built, well, now most of your construction and damage might happen after the repairs and paving have been done. So the idea is to put off those until the, until at least several of the houses are built and hopefully minimize the damage that occurs from the remaining houses, but have a, have a certain deadline. The paving and related work has it, has an outside date in addition to the CO trigger. It's the earlier of that third certificate of occupancy or November 15, 2022. That was the day recommended by engineering. So if the paving is done then, and the winter, and the paving has to survive the winter, it's done in time for that period, which starts December 1, December 1 to April 30. So that's, that explains the November 15, 2022 outside date for the paving and the related work as described in the email and the agreement. That was, that was the heart of the difficulty, was sorting out when things would get done. There is a homeowners association that was created pursuant to your decision last year. It's been recorded. So there's the HOA, Five Points is the only trustee, but as he, as Mr. Miller sells the lots, there will be successor trustees, and the HOA will have these responsibilities to maintain and then to, and then potentially to do, to do these, this work. So the board will have the security from the developer now for this work that may not take place for another year or two. But if he has a deal with the HOA where the HOA puts up substitute security for that long-range work, then the developer can get his money and, and won't be responsible for that work. You'll always have security. It'll be up to the HOA or its deal with, with Mr. Miller, whether to jump in, in his place. But you'll be secured, and, and the HOA is treated, treated fairly in that regard. That's the, I think those are the key points. The other waiver, well, there's, so there's two waivers. One is the two-year deadline from your decision, which would be January 2021. Instead, we're going to April 2021, as noted. And the other one is 6.7.4.3, which says the developer has to retain title and maintenance obligations to the road until a project is released from subdivision control. That, the town has seen that situation before, and I don't know why the regulations say that. That's something that we probably need to revisit, because that creates, that divorces ownership of the road from the ownership of the lots, creating the situation that we know of in the Heritage Estates subdivisions. So I'm recommending that you waive that as well. So that's the language of the two waivers that you have, and those are the highlights of the agreement.
Thank you, Art. Beth, I see that the town engineer is on this call. Brian, can you unmute her real quick?
Yep, hold on.
Maybe a little unmute herself.
Beth, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I just wanted, do you agree yes or no from you with Art and what's being proposed?
Yeah, we've been, we've been around quite a bit on the conversations, I think. Where we've landed is okay. Yep.
Thank you, Beth. Planning board, do you want to discuss? Have any questions?
I followed it. I thought it all. It sounds well thought through.
I agree. Heather Hannan, did you have any thoughts or questions, comments? No. De'ev?
Hold on, Justice. Oh, there he goes.
Hi, I unfortunately just joined you. But if I missed, if we're just following the motions, then yes.
Yeah, we're, we're reviewing the, I know you've been really involved in the tri-party agreement. So it's just reviewing where we currently are. He was giving an update, which you are well aware of, because you've been, been working with legal counsel on that. So it's just, he just gave us the update, talked about the waivers, and this is what he's recommending for the board to do at this moment.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Ken, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
It's Maureen. I'll make the motion and read what's on the screen pursuant to Section 3.9 of the Board's Rules and Regs governing the subdivision of land to waive the following provisions, it's two provisions of those regulations for purposes of the tripartite agreement among Five Points Development, LLC, Rockland Trust, and the Board dated May 12, 2020. And it's two waivers. The one of them is the two-year deadline for the completion of the work in Section 6.7.4.11. And the other waiver is for the requirement in Section 6.7.4.3 that the applicant shall retain fee title and maintenance responsibilities until the project is released from subdivision control. So those are the waivers.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
That's Heather Hannan is seconding it. Do we want to discuss or go to vote? We'll go, go to vote. Roll call, please.
It's Maureen. I made the motion. I vote aye.
Heather, aye.
De'ev? He's not picking up. I vote.
Yeah, no, De'ev raises his hand as a yes, I believe, but I can unmute him.
Unmute him, please.
Thank you. I vote yes. I don't know how I got muted.
All right, so that's a 4-0 vote, and I believe Betsy's not on yet, correct? So it's a 4-0 vote, and motion passes. Full discussion.
Hang on.
There's a second motion.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. My apologies.
There's another motion, and also the attorney of Five Points has raised his hand. Heather, if you want to take that now or after another vote is up to you, but the attorney has raised his hand.
I would like to keep going. Planning board, do you have any thoughts?
Keep going.
All right. Do we, someone want to make a motion?
Well, there's nothing brilliant here, thanks, Art. I'll make the motion to amend the conditional release of three lots shown on the Abbey Road definitive subdivision plan granted on April 7, 2020 to reduce the amount of the tripartite agreement from $108,000 to $91,018.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
You have a second, sit. Discussion or vote? Discussion? All right, we'll proceed to the vote. All those in favor, please roll call.
Meister, aye.
Heather, aye.
Curious, aye.
Von Mering, aye. And Craigers not present. Motion passes 401.
Heather, if you should now approve the tripartite agreement with, with those waivers and that changed amount. We, a month ago, or two months ago, we didn't contemplate necessarily coming back to the board, and, and you and De'ev served to review, review some early drafts. But I brought it back to the board, both, so the whole board had a chance to look at it because of the changes, but all, and also to avoid any open meeting law issues.
Yeah.
That's why we're here tonight. But, but, so I'm going to ask the whole board to vote on that. And then Jillian might have, I don't know if Jillian needs to raise a issue about the certificate tonight, a real estate part of this. But I'll, I'll leave that to her after your next vote.
Do we want to discuss? All right, go to a motion.
I'm working hard here, but Brian has to keep going there. So it's Maureen. I'm going to make a motion that the planning board execute the tripartite agreement as of the aver, in, as the, as of the aversion, as of the aversion, oh, well, in the, in the tripartite agreement as presented, how about that, on May 12, 2020?
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
You have a second, sit. Discussion? All right, let's go to a vote. Roll call, please.
Easier for Brian. Aye. It's Meister.
Curious, aye. Yep, go ahead.
Heather, aye.
Von Mering, aye. Motion passes 401. Craigers not present. All right, and so we needed to, you said there are some real estate items that we needed to take care of that Jillian was going to discuss with us.
Yeah, I don't know if, I don't know if you need to address them tonight or not.
Oh, so that's Jillian who's doing the echo. She must have two devices on.
Yeah, I just, I just unmuted her, and that's when the echo started. So, but I'm going to unmute her again unless you, all right, we'll, we'll see how this goes.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm here. Sorry for the echo. I'm only on the one device. I, so there's an echo, sorry. I don't know what to do about that. But I, yes, the tripartite agreement contemplates issuing the partial release simultaneously with signing the tripartite agreement, partially being for lots one, two, and three. So I, tonight, we should also have the board vote to execute that partial release and to designate a specific person to sign it. We have it set up just for one signatory, just for the sake of, you know, simplicity given the circumstances.
Jillian, so with the, with the, do we, do we, is there a check? Right now, we already heard it. Let's turn it over.
Hold on, I will unmute her. This is a little hard.
Art, are you able to answer that question?
I'm sorry, what was the question? I didn't hear it.
For the execution of the tri-party agreement, there's supposed to be a certain dollar amount that is attached to that that goes immediately into an escrow account. Do we have those funds set aside at this point, or?
No, those funds are, those funds will be deposited simultaneous with, with, or as part of the closing on the first three lots or any of those three lots.
So the lots are, I thought it was going to, lots are being released simultaneously with those sales, and the money was going directly into account. It's all one trans, technically one transaction moment.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be like any other closing where money gets dispersed in various directions.
Okay, so the lots are only going to be released once it's executed at the time of that closing, and the money is being put into account.
The lots are being held in escrow by, by Five Points Council, by Mr. James, who is mentioned on the line, if you have any question about it. He's, he's going to, he's going to hold this in escrow. This is paragraph 3A. He will hold this release of the, of lots one, two, and three in escrow until the closing.
Okay.
Essentially. It's more complicated than that, as, as you see in the paragraph Brian just put up there. But that's, that's essentially what's happening, and Jillian or Mr. James can explain that.
To the planning board, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Brian, do you want to unmute Mr. James real quickly?
Yep, just give me a sec. There's a lot of people on the call.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, Kurt?
Hi, it's Kurt James from KJP Partners.
You raised your hand. Is there an issue, or can we please keep going?
I was really just wanting to say thank you to the planning staff and to town council for all your help on this.
You're welcome. Thank you for joining the call. We're going to keep going, if that's all right with you, and move through this. We have.
Yeah, no, I, I think we're all set. Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, do we have a motion? Brian, can you go back to the motion? Your notes?
Sorry, I'm doing also a lot of chatting and other things, trying to keep certain people out that are clearly not supposed to be here.
Oh, that's fine.
So I'm using the chat function behind the scenes. So if it ever seems like I'm maybe taking a little bit longer, I'm trying my best. Okay, so we're going back to the vote for that Jillian wrote. Just give me a second. Okay, this was the partial release that, that was sent over related to the vote. I believe this is what, what we need.
Yeah, the board essentially just needs to approve, approve this as drafted. Jillian, Jillian, it can be as simple as that, right? Approve it and authorize one person to sign it.
And at the time, the signature is when it's actually executed.
Right. Brian, is Jillian muted?
It's, yeah, it's possible she's still got, got back muted.
Well, Brian, is the motion then, is the motion? Oh, I'm getting an echo.
Sorry, I think it's every time I get unmuted.
Yeah, there's something, yeah, there's something there.
Sorry, I'm not sure what's going off my computer. But yeah, it would be to vote to execute this partial release and to designate a specific person to sign it. And I'll go ahead and mute myself now again.
Sorry, Jillian. Thank you so much. So it's to execute this and to, and then also what she said was to designate a member of the board to, to execute it through signature.
Would it be you, Heather, is the most likely?
Yep.
Lucky candidate.
I anticipated that, but.
I'm offering, I did ask. So it's Maureen. I'm making a motion to, let's see. We collectively are executing the partial release and designating, well, it's not we, it's for the planning board to execute the partial release.
Maureen, the planning, the planning board is approving it and designating someone to sign it.
We're approving the partial release.
Yeah, that is, you're, you're granting the partial release as described and, and authorizing someone to, to sign on your behalf.
And designating Heather Von Mering to sign on behalf of the board.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
The motion is granting the partial release as described in 512, 2020, and designating Heather Von Mering from the board to sign.
Yep, my motion.
Second in. Any need to discuss? All right, roll call, vote.
Okay, this is curious, aye.
Meister, aye.
Hannan, aye.
Von Mering, aye. 401 with Craigers absent. Motion passes. Moving quickly on to, I believe that's everything. Thank you, everyone, for that, for Jillian.
Thank you.
I believe that Beth is staying on, but also thank you, Beth, for your time on all that. The engineering department and Brian have put a tremendous amount of time and energy into this. So thank you so much for, to both departments for working hard on this, to get it through and get it to us in the way that it was. Going on to town meeting articles for, we're a few minutes behind.
So Heather, Heather, excuse me, this is Art Krieger. Do you want me to stay on for any of this, or otherwise I'm done?
I don't see a need, anyone from the planning board, do you see a need for Art to stay on?
Only if he wants to.
Thank you.
Actually, it's Maureen. I have one question. We may be seeing a subdivision coming down the pike, and it has to do with a property that was already litigated. It went into court. The board was, our decision was upheld. Are you the person who would locate the documents? Because Brian may need them.
Am I the person you're asking?
Yes.
Sure, I mean, well, yeah, we can, we can track it down. I don't, I'll, I'll talk to Brian about that, if somebody knows which one you're, you're referring to. Okay, so thanks, everybody, especially Brian and Beth. But thank you to the board as well, and I am going to exit the meeting.
Thank you, Art, for all your time on this.
Thanks, and thanks to Jillian as well, of course.
To say, and Jillian as well.
Yeah.
All right, Brian, do you want to kick us off with the town meeting article discussion?
Sure, let me bring that up. Um, sure, let me bring that up. Okay, so, um, these are the three articles that we currently have, um, before town meeting at the moment, and then the fourth article here is a citizen's petition. I was not, um, the, we were going to be doing a full review of that petition, uh, at the hearing, I think, but we were going to be talking about it, I think, at a, at a general level now. Uh, Dennis Carlon has, is, joined the, joined the, the meeting, so if there are any questions for Dennis related to that, he, he's already here. Again, where it looks like we're about 10 minutes behind. Um, but these are the articles. Uh, there's been no further guidance from the manager's office, other than if an article could wait until fall, they're, they are asking everybody uh, to, to wait until fall if, um, if at all possible. Um, the words they use are, these are essential articles. Uh, we, there's no real definition of the word essential, but it's more of, it can wait, it should, everything else that's coming out of the town is related to capital expenses, the budget, personnel, um, and, um, some other, um, I know, I guess it's the personal, and then, I'm sorry, and then citizens petitions. So, um, that's where we are right now. We need to make a decision tonight. Um, or we, I, I think it makes sense to make a decision tonight on what we're gonna be doing, of whether we're gonna be moving forward with these articles, or one of them, or all of them, uh, and, or, or not. So I, I think that's something that, that should happen.
Um, I think actually our real goal was to determine if we were gonna move ahead or not. The citizen's petition is actually up to that citizen. We don't have the right, right, obviously, to.
Correct, correct. We do, we don't have, we don't have the right. It's, that would be our decision to determine what we're doing with our articles, and then, in addition to that, if there was time, I thought, I didn't, I know that some wanted to at least even talk about the citizen's petition tonight, I just didn't know if we were gonna have time for that.
Yeah, we don't have time to talk about the citizen's petition tonight, besides just talking about, uh, um, the warrant article and what we want to put on the warrant article or not. So, um, planning board, um, do you have thoughts about moving forward with any of these or not?
Well, I have a question first. Have you had any contact with, has, uh, any idea where this, where we stand with the finance committee and their budget that they're working on?
Uh, no, the, the manager, it's, it's changing very often, um, and the manager and the finance committee are working together. Um, but we have not been approached typically with, you know, so right now, uh, town, you know, town meeting is June 8th. Um, typically, by this time, we will have already gone in front of FinCom, um, but to be honest, I think everyone's a little bit in the dark right now, us included.
Um, with that, Brian, are, we submitted our budget. Um, it was, for everyone who doesn't know, all boards and committees were asked to go submit the budget that we had pre-override. If the override did not pass, um, that is what the planning board did. Um, so with that, um, that budget, um, only gave, um, it let go of our assistant town planner for the town. Um, and also, we are, we don't have any studies, money for any studies, or to be able to move forward with North Main. So Article 4 is, um, looking to get, um, $30,000 to move forward with the issues and economic development, and all the things that are, need to be worked on for the corridor of Main Street from Stop &amp; Shop all the way up to Warburn. Um, so that's what Article 4 is, that's why the question was brought up, but for, there's so many people on this Zoom call, I just want to make sure you all are aware that is what we're discussing, um, and keeping that article on. As of right now, I think Article 2 and Article 5 to the planning board, um, we can pull those at this point, coming back. And Article 2 is a scriptner's error. I believe that, um, town manager and town clerk and legal are working through just dealing with the scriptner's area, error. Um, and Article 5, uh, we can do, we don't need to have it in the zoning, although it's really nice to have it in the zoning, we can continue, we can do it without it written in the zoning. Um, it's just not a requirement, um, and we can come back to the fall to put that in. Um, I don't think we should take town meetings time for that. Article 4, my thought is to leave it as of right now and wait till our budget and figure it out. Um, asking, um, it really depends. We don't know what is actually going on with the finances of the town. We're kind of all in the dark at this point, um, and there isn't clarity there yet. So, until we have that, I say just keep Article 4 on, and we will, um, talk, um, closer to when we have more information regarding the finances.
Heather, I agree with you. I'm glad you feel that way. It's, um, I think even at this point, premature, and although I expect, um, there's going to be a lot of pruning in terms of the budget, that for the overall amount in the budget, that this amount of money is fairly small for a, an area of town where we're going to be seeing redevelopment, and we have to get ahead of it. So I think it's, um, so far, I'd hang in there.
I agree.
I agree. Brian, um, in response to that, can you reach out, um, and ask for an update from FinCom of what's going on? We have work, I mean, besides the memos that the town manager is sending out, was sending out daily and, um, and was put on the website and stuff, and those things, we actually, no one really knows what they're anticipating at this point. And I don't know if anyone actually does really know. The government at the state level hasn't been really forthcoming on what's going on with their budget, and, um, we don't know. So if we can get any update on that, that would help to determine how we go forward with Article 4. But at this point, we have no information to know if we need to stop all of our studies and all that work.
Um, yeah, no, um, that makes sense. Um, so, just so I have it that clear, it looks like in terms of, so these are articles, 2, 4, and 5, we're moving forward with Article 4, and then the other two, uh, we're moving with Article 4 as of now, uh, because we don't know what's going on with the budget. Um, so for instance, if something gets cut from, let's say our professional services gets cut from the budget, then we would, we would no doubt try, at least try for this, because then we have no money to do anything.
Pretty much, is all.
Right, so, but, um, so, okay, I think that makes, I want to make sure that that's clear to everyone, that I, I'm going to be, we're gonna be moving forward with Article 4 while the other ones, um, well, yeah, while the other, uh, while the other ones will, will wait.
Yep. Um, do you need a, we need a vote on that, because to pull them off, or we need a vote to move Article 4 forward onto the?
I think, yeah, so I think that's all. I think we just need to vote to go forward, um, because we've already put the, so first of all, two articles, 2, 4, and 5 are already on there, so we need an article, we need a motion to pull them off.
Okay. Does someone want to make motion?
I will move as soon as Brian finishes typing it.
So it's to pull?
With.
Yeah. Articles 2 and 5.
Okay, so I will move that the planning board withdraw articles 2 and 5 from the spring slash summer 2020 town meeting warrant.
I'll second it. It's Maureen.
Any discussion? All right, let's go to, uh, roll call vote, since we're on the phone.
Jerry, a si.
And an I.
Meister, I.
Von Mering, I. 401, Craigor is absent. Motion passes. Um, Brian, when you, uh, talk to, um, town manager, assistant town manager, um, I, I think, once you explain what, why, we're, why we're holding it for right now, uh, they'll understand it's not meant to be difficult. It's just, we need to know more information before we know, because that has, stripping our budget more than we already are stripping it is incredibly detrimental to the town's planning, um, as a whole, um, you know, so. We need to have a better understanding of how much they're looking to take that apart and dismantle it.
Well, it's Maureen. Um, I guess we've already voted, but I think we want to, we'll want to revisit it even, even, I, I'm not, I, I don't know that, I, I, in the past, sometimes it's like everybody cut X percent, but that's not really logical. The question is, what do the different amounts of money do for the town in, in, under the current circumstances? And I think under the current circumstances, that amount of money still could be worth a lot for our, going forward in the next five years.
Yeah, I think it also, it really, we need to see the big picture of what actually is going on.
Right.
We don't have that.
Agreed.
Have good decisions without that information. Um, all right, so I think that is everything. Um, as of right now, uh, the citizen's petition is proceeding. Um, we have a hearing on the 18th, I believe that starts at 7:30. Well, the 19th, at 7:35, I believe, a hearing for warrant article. Uh, the, just for Article 6, because the other article is not, actually, it's a money article, so we don't have to have a hearing on that. Correct, Brian?
Um, well, hold on. Um, correct, so that, I mean, we will talk about it at our hearing, um, on the 19th. Um, so that's already, it was, um, yeah, that, we will definitely be talking about on the 19th.
Okay.
Uh, we will, and we're really the only ones we're gonna be looking at are potentially that $30,000, uh, the North Main Street Article 6, and then that is also the time that is going to be the, the official public hearing for the citizen's petition. That we have, that's part of, as general law, we have to, um, hold that hearing for that zoning article.
Yeah, okay, so, great. All right, so moving onward, um, to 10 Converse Place.
Um, okay, I was just gonna talk very, very briefly here, because we're, we are a little bit behind, but I'm going to, um, basically, each, um, each architect is given, is given, uh, between, you know, somewhere in the 10 to 12 minute range. Um, I think, uh, so they're, they're very, very much aware of that. Dennis will be, um, speaking after each presentation. So the way it's gonna go i- is that, uh, the developer will introduce the team, and then there will be a 10-minute presentation, starting with 10 Converse Place first. After the architect from 10 Converse Place speaks, then we will have Dennis's take, uh, so then Dennis will have a few minutes, then the board, and then the public. So that's what we're gonna do for each project, where we're gonna go architect, Dennis, the board, and then the public, and we're gonna do that for each, uh, for each project. Right now, depending upon how many, uh, people want to speak from the public, we're giving people about two to three minutes. Uh, or, I, I think we're, we're trying to give three minutes. It kind of depends if, you know, that right now, I'm looking at, and there's 58 people on the call, and about probably 30 of those are the public. Um, around, around that, my, maybe 30 to 35 are the public, so it kind of depends on that, but we're, we're thinking about two to three minutes apiece. Um, with that, Heather, I was gonna turn it over very briefly to, uh, the developer to talk for two minutes to introduce, uh, and again, I'm gonna have a timer here. Um, so when, uh, I'm gonna start when the developer starts, and then, uh, using, using, uh, Mr. Gillespie, the developer, as well as the first architect, that's gonna be 15 minutes total, uh, and then the next will be 12. So Heather, if that's okay with you, I was gonna turn it, Ian?
Yep, I was gonna add a, a few more points just for the public, so they're, well, we're, what is going on, where we are at. Um, with, so 10 Converse Place and 654 Main Street, these are pre-application meetings. Um, no application has been filed for either of these sites. These are, uh, concepts, um, ideas and for what the site is before an application. The goal is to, of the pre-application meeting is to get public feedback, to get, uh, uh, information from the planning board regarding our interpretations of the zoning, um, so that they can then go forward and create a permit application, um, uh, as they see appropriate in response to all that information that they're gathering. So it's really information for the development team to gather, um, and, uh, I'm very happy to see that so many members of the community are here to give them that information, so that going forward, it costs a substantial amount of money to put together a permit application. So prior to doing that, they will have all the information, um, that you give them, so they can have the best chance of meeting the zoning and also giving the community what we really need. So I look forward to hearing from all of you, uh, going forward, as I know the rest of the planning board does as well. Um, so we're gonna kick off with 10 Converse Place. Um, the development team for both has some people who are on both of the properties, um, and then some people who are not and are different. Um, I'm gonna let them introduce, um, themselves and the members of the team that are currently on the Zoom with us, and those who are not present with us. So you will hear that at the beginning of the presentation. They will all speak, um, 10 to 12. We will be cutting them off, and unfortunately, we, due to the sheer volume of people, we will have to cut people off as well. Um, there are over 58 participants on this Zoom meeting. Uh, if you don't get to speak as much as you would like, please, please send any comments you have to the, um, planning board at Winchester.us. We do read them. They also do get forwarded, um, to, uh, the parties, so that they will have that information and know, um, what you think and what you feel, and what you're looking for yourselves. Um, so please, uh, use that email if you aren't able to communicate as much as you would like this evening. Um, all right, uh, please kick it off. Development team for 10 Converse Place.
Ian, uh, you're unmuted. Um, go right ahead. Uh, the clock is starting.
Great, thank you very much, Brian. You can hear me okay?
Yep, so go right ahead.
Terrific, thank you. I'm Ian Gillespie of Gillespie and Company. Now, I've been a developer in the greater Boston for many years. Uh, I'm joined this evening by my good friends and colleagues, Jan Steenbrugge and Paul Sutley from their firm, Admeliora. We'll go through the other, uh, team members in a minute. I think David Hussain, who's gonna lead us through the 10 Converse project, will be able to put up his screen. Is that right? Uh, Brian? David Hussain will be able to put up a screen?
Yes, I've just made him a co-host. He should be able to share his screen whenever.
Terrific, thank you. So some members of the board and many members of our audience were involved with the 10 years of master planning for the Central Business District from 2005 to 2015. At the 2015 town meeting, the planning board proposed a rezoning. The idea was to re-energize the downtown, and our projects are a result of that rezoning effort by the planning board that was passed by a 92% majority of town meeting. So you see on your screen the members of our team, uh, Paul Sutley and Jan Steenbrugge, and my great friends and colleagues at Admeliora. Mark Johnson is our attorney. David Hussain is a brilliant, brilliant architect, the head of Hussain and Associates. He'll be presenting 10 Converse. I've had the pleasure of working with Larry Beals for 25 years, and he is our civil engineer. Finally, and not least, John Copley is also a brilliant designer, and you will see why he's considered the dean of landscape design in greater Boston. So with that, let me turn it over to you, David. Do we have David's volume?
It should be working just fine now.
Sorry.
There you go, David, you're on.
Thank you. Can, can everyone hear me?
Yep, cool, yep, you're on.
Wonderful. I'm sorry, I'm just having a little bit of a challenge here with the, um, with my screen, so, um, I apologize. Um. Okay, there we go. Thank you, everybody, and it's one, I'm Madam Chair and, uh, members of the board, Mr. Zekali. Um, it's a pleasure to be here again and to share the project with you and the, the changes that we've made, um, over the last few weeks. Um, I'm going to, um, so if everyone can see the screen, for some reason, I cannot change the, the slides. I apologize. Okay, there we go. Thank you. Um, thanks for everyone's patience. I'm sorry with the, this new universe, the technology is, is tricky. So first of all, just the key project goals that, um, that, uh, uh, Ian just went through with us about the project meeting, the spirit of the zoning, the goal of the project to create new multifamily residences in the CBD, 15% of which will be affordable and a diversity of unit sizes, the goal of creating new retail spaces, achieving an FAR of 3.0 to maximize the town's programming goals, the goal of creating a meaningful publicly accessible open space along the Mill Pond, and of course, the objectives of the CBD's design guidelines with regards to the elements of form. So we don't have, um, much time, um, and unfortunately, I'm, my screen is. Um, and unfortunately, I'm, my screen is not cooperating.
There might just be a delay, usually when the, you're the co-host, this doesn't happen. I haven't seen this happen previously, but if um, it might, sometimes it takes a few seconds depending upon your internet connection, but
Okay.
the other way to go about this is if um, I go through it, um, you know, I'm in control, but then sometimes things are lost in that.
I'm okay if you're in control because I am having a, a little bit of a challenge here. So if you wanna grab the, the, the screen and then I'll just ask you to change slides, I, I, I don't mind, thank you.
Um, okay.
This is unfortunately the second time that, that this has happened where I can't change slides remotely. Thank you for everyone's patience on the call. Perfect, thank you, okay, so um, again, thank you. So uh, we have uh, many uh, analysis drawings which we have shared at previous meetings in the interest of time. I won't be going through them today. But I did wanna say that in this particular slide, I wanted to point out some of the important goals that we've established for this site. First is uh, as you can see, Mount Vernon Street is running across the top of the site. And Winchester Town Hall is on the right so that everyone can be oriented. Uh, the Mill Pond wrapping around to the mains, to Main Street and the bridge. Um, when you see the uh, dark red line, the dark red line is about the goal of extending the urban edge and retail space of Mount Vernon Street along Mount Vernon and wrapping it into the um, into the landscape as well as down Converse Place to make Converse Place a new street and part of the fabric of the city. With the goal of having Converse Street expand towards the water and create new connections to the water in that area. The green line reflects the idea of softening the building's edges along the landscape, along the more organic landscape of the Mill Pond. And then setting back, uh, pulling back the building of, at the water's edge to create a new publicly accessible space at the waterfront. Um, and also continue the paths, the bicycle paths and the pedestrian paths that currently exist along the Mill Pond. At the last meeting, we had a lot of conversation about the trade-off of the public open space and the height and bulk of the building. And I wanna thank the board for their feedback on that. And in particular, uh, one, one of the members of the board was very concerned about the six-story height as it related to the overall town. And so we worked very hard to reduce the height of the building by one full story and change the footprint of the building uh, to accommodate some of that lost square footage. And we feel that we've been able to accomplish many of the same landscape goals uh, within that uh, framework. Thank you, next slide. Um, this is a parking plan, the parking plan, it's worth noting, we're, we're pursuing possibly an automated parking arrangement. But every unit in the building and possibly some of the retail um, owners and so forth will have parking in the building. Next slide, please. Um, this is a ground floor plan that shows you the fact that we are proposing retail restaurant uses along Mount Vernon Street that wrap around the corner with a outdoor dining terrace right off Mount Vernon facing the pond. And then residential amenities and a residential lobby along Converse Place uh, facing the Mill Pond. I'll say a little bit more about the landscape in a moment. But you can also see in this diagram that Converse Place is considered, is going to be considered a, a more pedestrianized uh, street than it currently is. Next slide. Um, above, we have a number of units uh, about um, uh, resident, a mix of residential units, one, two, and three bedroom units. Um, on the first number of floors on two, three, and four. And then if you go to the next slide, you will see that on the fifth story, we've significantly set back uh, the uh, the units on that floor to create a, a more elegant roof profile on that building along with public, I mean, that with private outdoor spaces for each unit as they wrap around. Next slide, and then this is the roof plan, which merely explains that we really see very two important focal points um, in the building. One is at the Mount Vernon corner where we have a rotunda element uh, as a gateway coming into town. And at the other um, at, at the entrance to the building, a special moment which marks the lobby and uh, hopefully creates some character and a sense of place at that uh, location. All the mechanical would be concealed. Now, in the next couple of slides, um, if you could go one more, I won't be able to uh, do uh, John Copley's landscape ideas justice here. But I wanted to explain that we've worked very hard to create a public oval um, of some dimension right at the water's edge with direct access to the water um, at the southern portion of the building with a plaza entrance into the lobby. And you can also begin to see the idea of flush brick paving or flush pavers on Converse Place. This idea of making that street what's called a woo-nurf, which is a shared pedestrian um, and vehicular street. In addition, all of the pedestrian and bicycle paths would continue around the site. I'm moving quite quickly because I wanna make sure we cover all the, the ground. And John will be available to answer questions. This is some sections, conceptual sections showing how that sloped landscape would meet the water and create a new relationship for the town and the pond's edge. We're very excited about this. Next slide. Um, one of the really interesting things about the landscape, uh, this is actually about the landscape materials. But the landscape materials and the architectural materials that we're proposing are pretty much the same. We're looking at red brick, uh, slate, granite, um, ironwork and patented copper materials that have a real warmth and depth and are part of the tradition of downtown Winchester. Next slide, please. Uh, this indicates what that um, landscape down to the water might feel like. These are some precedent images. And on the lower right, the idea of this shared pedestrian vehicular street on Converse Place. Now I'm gonna turn to the building and walk you around the building uh, quickly. So this is a view down Mount Vernon Street, looking back towards Town Hall. We've worked hard to make sure that that vista towards the Town Hall is preserved. And also uh, in this latest iteration of the project, we've brought the scale down considerably, not just from six to five, but to, from five to four plus one setback. So on this, um, in this view, you're seeing a setback fifth floor. I'll talk about the rotunda in the, in the distance in one moment. And a uh, of, of the expression of a four-story uh, building in the, in the, in the town, which we believe feels very much in scale and character with the rest of the buildings uh, in the area. Um, if you go to the next slide, we'll show you a little bit of a detail. Now, it's very important for me to emphasize that this is just a pre-filing concept. So we have not yet been able to get into the details of the brick and the windows and the cornices, all things that we would explore in more ti- with more time in the filing. But we would did wanna give you this, this sense of the richness of the materials of copper and slate on the upper floors of windows that varied but from sizes that were uh, around living rooms to bedroom windows so that it really felt like a residential building. Um, the idea of chimney-like elements that separate uh, the units up above, creating a roof profile um, on that top floor. This is a view coming into town um, from uh, basically in front of Town Hall. And you can see that, that idea of the building sort of rolling around the corner and turning into the landscape, the retail rolling and turning into the landscape. And the idea of, of almost a townhouse-like expression uh, down the pond with uh, the, these chimney elements marking uh, the, the rhythm of the residences as they move around the edge. You also see the rotunda element at the corner, which we see as a little architectural gateway moment that is like the character of a lot of the special moments that exist around Winchester's um, town center. Uh, this is a detail showing the retail restaurant space, which we're hoping will help extend and eliten the retail uh, uh, character of Mount Vernon Street as it rolls in towards the terrace on the left. Outdoor dining is gonna become more important than ever in the next couple of years. So we're very pleased that we can offer that opportunity uh, for downtown Winchester. Next slide, please. This is showing the detail, and if you look closely, you can see the difference between the slate and the copper. Um, the uh, the, the cornice um, and uh, the brick uh, appears that are chimney-like elements that mark each of the individual residences uh, as they turn um, down that street. The idea here really to create an exciting and, and um, a varied roof profile along the fifth floor as you look up at the sky. Um, this is that view going, looking slightly uh, further over. The invitation to the landscape on the left-hand side with the paths, the bicycle paths, pedestrian paths, uh, the Mill Pond on the left and the terrace seating uh, on the right-hand side. And you can also notice in this view that the, the fifth floor pretty much disappears from view on the street as you are walking down Mount Vernon Street. This is a view of the building, the laundry building as it currently exists. Um, it's uh, I think about sixty-one feet tall. Um, and we wanted to give you this uh, building for, for reference. If you go to the next slide, um, you will see our proposal. And the red dash line reflects where the laundry building currently is. And then this element on the left reflects what might be some future uh, development um, in the CBD uh, to give some context for how we've developed this idea. But this is truly the marker of the, to create a new vista from the bridge uh, towards uh, the collect, beautiful collection of buildings that exists around the pond and, and pull the building back to defer uh, to the Town Hall um, in the distance and, and have that softer profile as it faces the water.
Just a quick note that that's uh, fifteen minutes with the previous portion, and I think that's, no, no, the, um, we had a little, little technical um, difficulties. Uh, Heather, I don't know, uh, I think we, maybe another two or three minutes, something, something like that.
More minutes, please.
Okay, I'll make it very quick.
Yep.
Um, so, yeah, so um, thank you, and I again, I apologize for the technical difficulties. Uh, the next slide, it shows a detail of this uh, oval element that we're uh, marking the entrance with, which will be a series of beautiful dining rooms stacked for those residences inside. And we think a special, uh, a special architectural moment for the town. Um, this is the view uh, from literally on the pond, looking back at the water. And um, and the row of townhouses going off to the right. And the new landscape, new lighting, uh, new paths all around the uh, the base of the building. A detail of the uh, setback on the top floor with terraces facing the water. And then this is a view down the woo-nurf from Mount Vernon Street, showing how we've, from since the last scheme uh, re- wrapped the retail around the corner, uh, added awnings. Um, and uh, at a lower scale, uh, really concealed the garage entrances and are really stepping back the facade so that they open up towards the water in that uh, final view uh, down, down that uh, perspective. And I like this view because this really shows this new public square, public place in downtown Winchester. Uh, the entrance to the building um, is uh, right under the, the special corner. Uh, you can see the bank building down the um, woo-nurf uh, at uh, the far end of Converse Place and uh, Town Hall in the distance, uh, a new, a new place for, for um, for Winchester, for people to gather. Uh, and then this is a detail again, because there was a lot of emphasis on the roof profile and making sure we had an active roof profile as part of the design guidelines. And so we've really gone to great efforts to create this uh, combination of dormers and mansard roofs um, and chimneys uh, to make that a really um, a beautiful cap to the building. I think that in the interests of time, I think the next slide is uh, I'm just gonna talk about the uh, overall heights of the building. And then I may leave some of the rest of the slides for a future discussion. But I know there was some, these were some uh, drawings that were actually requested by members of the board. And so we wanted to mention that the building is now at sixty-one feet to the top of the parapet, but actually fifty-nine feet to the roof. Um, and as you can see in the site section through Mount Vernon, that it falls very much within the uh, scale of buildings that already exist in the town. And that's true uh, for all three of these sections. And then we also, on the next slide, cut a section through the Mill Pond um, to give folks a sense of the relative heights of the building to the Lincoln School, which is up on um, the uh, the berm of the hill across the pond, which is a full twenty or more feet taller than our building. So the point here is that we've really worked hard to bring the building down, but to also add a lot of richness and character along that fifth floor. We know that this is a pre-filing and some of the slides that I have afterwards, which unfortunately I don't have time to go through, talk about the ideas of base, middle, and top, making sure that the window openings are richly detailed, that the materials are in keeping with the character of Winchester. Um, all of these are goals that we have for the architecture um, as we get into um, the uh, hopefully next steps on the development of this design. Uh, thank you very much um, uh, all for the time.
Wonderful, thank you so much, uh, David Haseen and your team. Um, I think now um, in the interest of time, I'm gonna um, go directly to Dennis Carlon. He's gonna give a very brief overview of the process so far in terms of uh, uh, design review. And, and then he's going to give his take, and then we're gonna go through the board, and then we're gonna open it up to the public. So Dennis, I'm gonna unmute you now, um, and um, take it away.
Thank you. Both of these sites that we're gonna see tonight have interesting needs, urban town design needs. And I believe both of them uh, worked very hard to achieve them. Could we go to the ground floor plan, please, Brian, which was one of the earlier slides? One more. Uh, and one more, sorry. The, it's always difficult to include parking in a town-scale building. How do you hide it? How do you shield it? Where do you locate it? But the basic layout on the ground floor has evolved in a, quite a beautiful way. Um, I, I'm just gonna hi- I think this is a very elegant design. I think it does everything it can to fit in and to try to be broken down in scale and to be a proud addition to a site that's on the Mill Pond next to Town Hall and tries to reinforce Mount Vernon Street as a shopping street. And frankly, terminates of the street with the potential for an exciting restaurant. My only concerns are, and I think they can be easily remedied, is if it's possible to use an elevator lift for the parking, the ramp will be um, reduced, the impact could be somewhat reduced. But they done a good job on shielding it, and the only other comment on the building is whatever use uh, is incorporated into the residential amenities, lower right-hand corner at the curve corner really needs to be considered in light that it's a very visible use. Anytime you're at a corner site along the public domain, it's very important. The landscape treatment is uh, very elegant. It tries to make much of what there is. I was gonna use the previous site plan, but stay there, that's fine, just like that. And um, I, I give it a lot of credit for very demanding needs, demanding dimensions. The one-off, uh, this was a proposal we had in the master plan about making a special street. Will obviously have to be integrated with neighboring properties, and this is uh, the first look at that incorporating service. But it's a slow traffic street, it's basically a five mile per hour right-of-way. And in, in a very strong way, it is sort of, it extends the pedestrian and bicycle public domain. And in, in a very strong way, it sort of extends the pedestrian and bicycle public domain as well and says, when you get to the pond, when you get to the water's edge and near it, it's a very special place. If you could go to the roof plan, which is going backwards, you'll, you noticed in the renderings that it's basically a flat roof above the fifth floor. And I, and this is really up to the planning board. I think there's a potential for a building roof deck or pergola on the top, which I think could only accent the, the top floor. It might only be at the bottom side next to the oval, doesn't have to be the whole roof, but it would add an element of a lot of excitement and, I think, beautiful richness to the, to the silhouette. There's a rendering that shows the roof treatment on the fifth floor. I'm trying to do this quickly. We could do that one. I was very impressed with this. I, leave that one, Brian, that's perfectly fine. Leave, leave the one that's there. It's, it's an elegance that is modern, yes, traditional, trying to incorporate mixed materials in a rich, elegant way, and I think succeeding. But also does something that the planning board mentioned, and that is almost making the sides elevation feel like townhouses. That is, the scale of the two-room bay, living room, bedroom bay, is expressed from base to top, but it evolves from the first floor to the middle floors to the top floor and culminates in these beautiful terraces. The rotunda at the corner really came out of the notion that one of the planning board members said, curving the corners. And the conclusion to us was that along the landscaped edge, the water edge, the public walkway edge, that's where the curved corners is, and this sort of accentuates it as it goes up. My, the only thing that I have a little concern about is how the copper, which is the flatter portions that seem like panels, but they wouldn't be necessarily panels, how that's all detailed to work with the slate and not feel clumpy but elegant. I'm sure we'll get there, but that's definitely a refinement. Let's see. The outdoor dining, which I, I think that's good enough right there. To me, that is key, and I said this in the first presentation. That is, Mount Vernon Street retail frontage pretty much ends here, but it ends in an exuberant way with outdoor seating, which is exciting, and there isn't much in town. I always imagined a site near the railroad station, but that's another story. And the whole integration of the path becomes more of a journey for that. But it really adds a downtown life element to this. And lastly, I'll say, and I can go into a lot of detail, I'm trying to do this fast. What I call the oval at the front, you've noticed that there's outdoor benches, the development team would be maintaining this. We, I know public benches have to have backs. Even in the oval, I would have a few benches with backs that load into the water at the top of the oval. I could talk a lot about the elegance of the storefronts and potential signage, but I won't go there unless you ask a question. But I am extremely pleased with this. I know that with refinement and further design review, this will be a handsome addition to the downtown that's extremely respectful and take, makes the most from a town point of view as well as a residential point of view of the site. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. So now, at this time, we were going to go around the board, and whether it's give comments or it's kind of up to the board, but we're actually not doing the worst on time. We've made up some of the time that we have, we've lost. So I'm going to unmute the chair. Okay, Heather, you are unmuted.
Thank you, Brian. Can you unmute the planning board, please?
They, yep, they should be just fine. Everyone is unmuted on the planning board at this moment.
All right, thank you. All right, so planning board, as Brian said, we were going to talk. Would you rather hold our comments until the public speaks, or would you like to speak now?
I want to wait and hear from the public. We haven't had much opportunity.
Yeah, me too.
Wonderful.
Do you have one more? Do you have your thoughts? Oh, you have a bad signal, Diab. Can you try again?
I concur.
Thank you. All right, so Brian, we're going to open it to the public and how we're going to do it, so everyone knows. We're going to, as Brian said, we're going to give, we are going to unmute everyone. And please say your name, and if you'd like to speak, we'll create a list, and then we'll go down that list and unmute you one at a time. The reason we keep everyone muted is because it's very difficult when you have so many people on here to hear what the people are saying, if there's any background noise. So if you would like to speak, please raise your hand if you know how to do that on Zoom.
Yeah, I would say, well, let's start, let's start there. I do know that someone has already, I see that Sally and Dennis Dale has raised their hand. I already actually have something from Diom. And it looks like Jackie Welch and John Serbeer are raising their hands. So we're going to try to figure out everybody.
Anyone who cannot raise their hands right now.
Right, right. But I'm just trying, we need to figure out really in terms of time. So it looks like it's one, two, three, plus Diom is four, and then who's ever on the phone. So, okay, I'm going to keep your hands, and I'm going to unmute everybody. So if you have, try not to put the volume up too high, because that's actually how the feedback occurs. So if you're calling on the, on the phone, please let me know now if you would like to speak at some point, and I'll write your name down, I'll get you in the queue. Anybody would like to speak now is the time to say that you would like to speak.
So this is Sally and Dennis, and we would be happy to speak.
Yes, so if you've already raised your hand, that's fine. It's for the people on the phone who can't raise their hand.
This is Michelle McCarthy. I'd love to speak, please.
Okay, thank you.
Jamie DeVal, I would like to speak, please.
Okay. Okay, so then I have everyone that's raised their hand, plus Jamie DeVal and Michelle McCarthy. I'm going to mute everybody back. Okay, so hold on just a second, and Bill Johnson just chatted that he would also like to speak. So I'm going to start with Diom. I'm going to unmute Diom. He was the first person yesterday and sent me something because he has prepared something, and I'm going to get that up on, Diab, can you please, can you, can you hear us and can you please speak?
Can you hear me?
Very low, but yes, I can hear you. Yeah. Okay, Diom, so it looks like we have about maybe seven or maybe like eight people, so I think what we're going to still go for is this three, three minutes. And Diom, I'm going to get your, here we go. Okay, so Diom, you're, you're going to have three minutes, and I'll at least tell you when those three minutes, when those three minutes are up, but the floor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, members of the board. Just a reminder that we all, as residents here, are very fortunate to live in the town that we live in. It's a very, very special place for those who are online, we all know it. And a very special place within the town, of course, we recognize is, is Mill Pond. And really the pearl and the oyster here. Anybody who ever comes to visit, and they always look over the various bridges at Main Street, Mount Vernon Street, and look across the pond and say, wow, is this not a great place to live? And one of the buildings that always stuck out to me, that was somewhat of an eyesore, was the, the old laundry building at the corner there. And I remarked over years, I said, you know, how did that building ever get built? And who, who, who let that happen? And of course, it's an old, it's an old mill building originally, and became a laundry building. But it's great that I think that the developers used it on the cover sheet of his presentation, because as he remarked, it's quite interesting in that the height of the laundry building is sixty-one foot tall, which is the height of the proposed new structure. I actually, and so it gives an idea of what the size and mass and scale of the project that we're talking about is, and not just rely on images or photographs, other photos. So what I did was basically measure the mill building, in general terms, to find out it was forty-five by seventy-five by sixty-one foot tall. And just to give you an idea of the scale of this new project, it's effectively, if you can think, there are four of those mill buildings. Now, I'm not talking about how it's broken down in terms of architecture, but the scale of this development is effectively four of the mill buildings combined. In fact, it's a little greater than that. So I'm, you know, there's a lot I like about this project. I'm certainly very much in favor of development downtown. But this building in the context of the other, the urban structure downtown, this is a huge, this is a huge building. And I'm not too sure that everybody understands how big it is, and that's a concern to me. Another concern really is, there's really very little community awareness about this project. When I talk to friends or neighbors and comes up in conversation, nobody knows what's going on. And there's no community or constituency around this particular site where people can sort of weigh in as neighbors. And, you know, it doesn't help that we're sort of reduced to online meetings to talk about a project like this. So the main issue I have is, this is a big, big building. And I just hope that people realize as they view it on some of these images and sketches and renderings that it's actually, in my mind, from a professional perspective, it's bigger than the images would suggest. So I had sent some other images to you, Brian. Quickly, I can race through a few if you would. Just showing the limits of the site in relationship to landscaping. The property line is marked in red here. The rest of the land is, I guess, in the public domain, and the developer, I suspect, would be charged with those improvements. Just for clarification, could you move on, please? Thank you. The building on the right, it's, it's a sort of, one of the things, as you look through these images to the sort of un-tutored eye, is that the larger you make your foreground, what you put in the near distance or in the rare ground seems very small. So this image would give you the impression that this building is relatively small. And I want to reiterate again, this is a big building, and I don't think that image actually provides justice to exactly how big it is. You can scroll through a few more quickly. Again, the foreground on the right-hand side is so, so large, it gives the impression of a smaller building. But again, this is a big building. I don't want to overemphasize it, but if you scroll down through a couple more, Brian, and I'll be done. You can keep, you can keep going. Next slide, please. Next slide. Again, that's probably the best image for any member of the public to get a sense of what we're talking about here. And again, if you take the tree out of there, you will get a sense that this is, this, this is nothing like anything else in our downtown. It's, it's big. So next slide, please. Again, move right along, please. Thank you, Brian. Again, in some of the imagery, you see the shading on the left-hand side, but that's all building. The ghosting of the, of the structure is an attempt, I think, to hide the mass and size of it, but that's, that's all building right there on the left-hand side. Similarly, here in this elevation, there's, it's ghosted to the left, but it may be going off at an angle, but that's, in real life, that's real building right there. Next slide, please. Next slide. I think that's it. Well, thank you very much, Brian. Again, I'm very, very supportive of development downtown. I, just from my own personal, professional opinion, I think the building is, is too big for this site. And I would suggest that this building needs to be four stories in height, and that it should be in the range of fifty-foot in height in total. And if it's going to be a building that is effectively the sum total of four or five laundry buildings compacted together on that site, it gives me, it gives me great concern.
Thank you very much. Can you please state your address?
Diem O'Connell, Ten Bacon Street, Winchester.
Thank you so much. So when you speak, please just state your name and address as well. But I didn't get a chance to. Thank you so much for your comments. I'm going next on the list is Sally and Dennis. And can you please state your full name and your address?
This is Sally and Dennis Dale at 147 Cambridge Street in Winchester, and I'm a precinct seven town meeting member, and we are twenty-five-year residents of the town. And Dennis is a licensed landscape architect practicing in Winchester. And so Dennis has comments.
I agree with the last comments regarding the scale of the building. It is massive. And there isn't a building in town that has this size. The fact that it's actually taller than the Town Hall is a real issue. And the fact that they're using the Lincoln Elementary School, which is sitting on top of a hill, as a scale comparison is unjustified and obfuscating. The streetscape side, the sections would be really helpful if they actually showed a section through the street showing the fire station immediately adjacent to the restaurant. And the restaurant being on the northeast corner seems unfortunate. It's cooler and darker. All the energy of the pond is on the waterfall side, which is where all the residential amenities are. The woofer is a wonderful idea. It eliminates all the parking on that area. And also, there's a struggle with the backside of that space being serviced for the, the other retail on that, on that street. I think the landscape is way overdone. Too many swirling, curling patterns. It needs to calm down and be simplified. And I'm not sure what happens at every one of those little points. And it looks incredibly expensive to have stone cut in these curving shapes. Unlike anything that is in town, the access and the images actually looking from the pond up are distended. There isn't that much space between the pond and the walkways. So these images of the, this long sloping greenway down to the pond is incredibly inaccurate. The whole building has to drop at least another story. And the large brick piers between each one of the townhouse units makes it look like a factory. Not sure what that is doing there. It looks like something out of Lowell. Not sure what that is doing there. It looks like something out of Lowell. And also, I don't know whether Dennis Carlon actually works for the con, for us, for the town, or whether he is working for the contractor. And suggestions about putting pergolas on the top of this building are is ridiculous. Material details are way in the future. I mean, that that and the parking, I'd like to have a number of parking spaces per unit count. That would be very helpful also to have.
Dining on the water side.
Yeah, it might be much better to have the dining on the water on the, than the waterfall side. So that's about the limit of my suggestions. So right now, thank you.
Okay, the next person, the next person with their hand up was Jackie Welch. Jackie Welch, I'm going to unmute you, and the floor is yours. Oh, wait. There we go.
All right. Thank you. I'm I'm participating by video, but it doesn't seem like other people have their video on. So I don't want to be the only face on. So I'm assuming you can hear me okay audible?
Yep, you're, everyone can hear you just fine.
Okay, that's great. First of all, I wanted to thank the planning board for all of their expertise and hard work. I know from my past experience on the planning board, that you have a tremendous docket of things to do. Obviously, an immensely important project for the town. And I just wanted to thank each member of the planning board for how hard you work for the town. And we greatly appreciate both your professionalism, your patience, and your time, which is enormous. But I only have like, you know, a minute or so, but I just wanted to mention a few things. First of all, thank you so much for the team, the investment team and the folks who are thinking about, you know, this this application and the pre-application stage currently. We thank you for considering Winchester to invest in. Having said that, though, and I also wanted to thank Dennis Carlon. And it's always such a pleasure to work with him and to have his expertise as part of any of our projects or anything that we do in town. So but I did want to say that I do, just very briefly, think I do have a concern about the overall scale and massing of the building. Putting the, you know, creative architecture aside, just the overall scale and massing for our town, given the relatively small size of our town center. Not disrespecting the fact that we do want development, but as the prior folks have indicated before me, it seems like four stories might be more consistent with what we have in our town center and even a little high, but something that that would be kind of more consistent with what we have in our town center. I just have a few specific points and then I'll let someone else contribute. You know, I'm assuming that this project is relying on pud zoning. I'm not sure if that's correct or if it's they're relying on special permit. But if I am remembering from our drafting days of the Center Business District Bylaw, which I have in front of me, I believe it's relying on the pud zoning. So at some point, I'm sure the board will need to ensure that all of the dimensional setbacks are complied with as well as height and as well as percentage of open space. In addition, I would note that it's still the planning board's decision that even if there's a design that's been that's presented to the board, obviously, the planning board has a very important role. And just because a project might request pud zoning or any other kind of special permit zoning, does that does not mean that the planning board does not, you know, have the ability to weigh all the factors that are outlined in the Center Business District zoning and make its own decision. The planning board's role is immense. I'm sure that the planning board will also want to make sure that this design complies with the other predicate requirement for pud zoning with respect to the mix of of housing. And I won't take the time to quote from the bylaw, but I'm sure the planning board knows what I'm referring to. Just a couple other comments on the design, if I can. I'm certainly not an architect. I have great respect for those in the room who are. But the rotunda elements are, they're lovely in concept. I would just note that the rotunda element, not the one that's being pictured right here, well, actually, the one that's being pictured right here, one of the reasons why I like it on the fifth floor is because it's recessed. Overall, I think that the entire fifth floor, it's great that much of it is recessed, but not all of it is. So these divider chimney structures in brick, I would suggest that if this is, if the team does continue to apply for this, that they consider having those brick separators set back as well and not flush to the the plane of the of the first through fourth floors. Because it loses the setback appeal of the fifth floor by having those brick dividers flush with the plane of all the rest of the building. The rotunda on the fifth floor in this rendering is, but this rendering, it's not. So I would suggest that it it almost, this fifth floor rotunda, the fifth floor level of the rotunda almost like towers over everything else. And I would suggest that the design team consider whether it's going to be a fourth floor building or a fifth floor, that that also be recessed, like the rotunda towards the the town hall. And and as I note, I think everything on the fifth floor, going to be a fourth floor, should be recessed so that you get the full benefit of not having parts of the architectural design tower over those on the street. Two other really quick things. Mr. Carlon mentioned the mechanicals on the roof. I think in the presentation, they indicated that the mechanicals would not affect the height at all. And I think the planning board would just want to confirm that, that the mechanicals are interior and that there would be no additional height. And if there is going to be an additional height, that it be very clear what that height is and what's going to be seen. Because as this building is viewed from the road, like next to, you know, Mystic Valley Parkway near the Lincoln School, you can see the, you'll be able to see the height of the building. And then lastly, just as a legal note, the oval, it looks like technically it's part of the property of the building. But if if the designers are thinking that the public can use that oval, then I would think the planning board would want to make sure that the that the public would continue to have access to it. There also might be some issues for the owner, whether or not they would want to do that. So I think there needs to be transparency and clarity of who has the right to use that oval, you know, what the liability is, et cetera, would, I would think the design team would want to keep that in mind. By the way, Jackie Welch, twenty-seven Everett Avenue, I'm grateful for your time and attention. Thank you so much again, planning board. Thank you. I'll mute myself.
Thank you, Jackie. And for those who don't know, Jackie Welch is a member of the Select Board and also a former Planning Board member. Thank you for your comments, Jackie. Next in line, I have John Serbeer.
Yes, and I will, so John is next. I just want to say that we have, I'm going to start calling out at three minutes when three minutes are up.
Okay.
John, the floor is yours.
I just want to make, John Serbeer from the Housing Partnership Board, I just want to make a couple of comments. I am very impressed by the quality of design that's incorporated in the current proposal and by the huge improvements that have been made over time over the last few months. And I would congratulate the architectural and development team, Dennis Carlon, Brian Zekely, and the planning board for for working very cooperatively. And I think this is a, an important site, and I think it's an important project and an important design. And when I first saw this presented at the Chamber of Commerce meeting last night, I couldn't believe how much better this design is than the previous one. So I congratulate everyone for that. And the second point I would make is that this is one of the areas in the the new zoning for the Central Business District that was called out for more dense development. And I think this proposal and this design is very consistent with the zoning that was developed, that was proposed by the planning board and developed by town meeting. So those are my two comments.
Thank you, John. Michelle McCarthy is next. I'm going to unmute Michelle.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. This is Michelle McCarthy. I live at twenty-nine Oxford Street. I'm a longtime Winchester resident, former town meeting member and longtime former member of the Winchester Historic Commission. I believe most of you on the planning board know me as that crazy historic commission lady. I would just like to say, I've participated in many meetings such as this, looking at new construction and new building plans and design review. And I think this is the best I've ever seen. I, as a little girl, grew up riding my bike around that pond. I've been doing that a lot lately with my children, who are not in school every day, as we all know. And I know that change is hard, but overall, I think this design is really beautiful. There are a lot of add new developments in our town and in other towns around. And I haven't seen anything that looks as great as this. So I was really excited to see the changes and I was really excited to see this. And I think that Winchester would be lucky to have it. For those of you that don't know me, I really am sort of known as a historic building addict, you could call me. And I I don't really like money, a lot of new construction. But this, to me, really brings out a lot of the historic elements in town. I love the curved elements. I love the way that it sits back on the water. I love the brick. I love the rooftop terraces, I think as Mr. Colleone pointed out. This is a building I could find myself living in one day. And I think right now, something I haven't heard people talk about is that the whole country, the whole world, is going through a very difficult time. And our downtown businesses are really struggling. And I think that this is, you know, there's a lot of units here, but I think it would be really great for our downtown, for all the businesses. And my elderly parents recently downsized and had a very difficult time finding a condo in Winchester so that they could stay local. There's really not a lot of options for them. And I think a building like this would be very much the new, you know, hot place to be. So I just have to point that out. I think it looks beautiful. And I'm really excited to see how this development continues. And thank you so much to the architect and everyone on the planning board and the developers for bringing this to our downtown. I think that it does blend in with our beautiful historic downtown. And I'm really excited to see the development. So thank you so much for letting me participate tonight. I really appreciate that.
Thanks, Michelle. We're just going to keep on moving here as time is going. So Jamie DeVal's going to be next, and then Craig Robb. And then I believe that might be it from the public. I'm going to turn Jamie's mic on right now.
Hey, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, you're ready to go.
So my name's Jamie DeVal. I live on Dix Terrace, Seven Dix Terrace here in town. And I'm a longtime resident and an architect. And following up on what Michelle had to say, I think there are a lot of aspects of this building that are nice and that we all like. But I do agree with DM and I agree with what Dennis had to say and with what Jackie had to say. But I think, yeah, I think it's too big. I think it should be four stories at most. The top story should be set back. I also very much appreciated what Dennis had to say about the water side being much more amenable to dining. It's in the sun. It's evening light. It's afternoon light. The side that it's on now, I realize it livenes Waterfield Street, but it would be in the shade after the morning hours. I also think there's a possibility that, I know we all want retail on Waterfield, but I am thinking that the public space faces the water and faces the civic buildings. And that if you wanted, there's a possibility of going ahead and letting residential line Waterfield Street, if that helps make the building smaller. I like a lot of what has happened, like the widening of a converse place, et cetera. And I agree with Jackie about the towers, that they're awkward. But when I look at, for example, the slide that is up now, I think the rounded corner is beautiful. And I think the brick and the cornice, I just think it needs to be shorter. And you can really see that when you look at the, at the, at the perspective going down from the other side of Waterfield with which she is right next to you. And it's like, it's drawn too small. I mean, it's, DM pointed that out. It's like, he had, he had a line showing that the cornice of the two-story building lines up with the four-story building. And there's something wrong with that. And I think DM is so right, that we'll just be really shocked at how big this building is. Four to five mill pond buildings here. But I think a lot of what like Michelle likes and more housing and and opening up the oval to the public would be great. I'm sure I have more comments, but I'll let others speak. Thank you so much.
Okay, and let's see, I know Lance wanted to speak as well. Let me see if there's anyone else that has their hand up. Just give me a minute.
Did Craig want to speak? He was next in line.
I'm trying, yeah, I'm trying to unmute him, but it's just, it's not working.
You may not be interested in being unmuted.
Can I add one thing? This is Jamie again. I really liked what Jackie had to say about the roof scape, how important that is, that we do see roofs from streets on the hills overlooking downtown Winchester. Thank you. I will mute myself.
Okay, I'm unmuted now. This is Craig Robbie.
Can you please give your answer?
Yeah, Seventeen Hutchinson Road.
Thank you.
I'm the current president of the Chamber of Commerce, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, just myself, my personal opinion of this project. You know, I don't have any kind of architectural perspective of this, but I think it's a beautiful building. It really fits the decor of downtown. It's a really historic-looking building. I really echo the thoughts of Michelle as well. I mean, everything that you said, I think everyone's done a good job of putting together a great, beautiful property here. It is a big property, and that's what the CBD district and the zoning board and the town planning were looking for. I think it brings a good density to downtown. And I think it does a good job of the element of having a five-story building, but by recessing it, appearing more of a four-story at the street level. So I mean, it is a big building. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. And I think it will really add to the downtown and be a huge asset for the community. So I think everyone's done a great job putting this together. And everyone can like, kind of have their own opinions on certain things, the architecture. I think the architects have done a great job. And I think whatever we end up with is going to be a beautiful building, especially this is the starting point. That's all.
Craig, it looks like we have Lance is last, unless there might be if anyone wanted their hand. But Lance, he wanted to make one comment before we finish with the public. So Lance, you take it away.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Three comments very briefly. Much concern about the mass of the building. I might agree, it's large. But I think that is in part due to the fact that we are, we've come to see Winchester as a much lower town center than it used to be. As I think Maureen will recall, when we started working on the town center bylaws and then rethink the town center, what we found from the historical record was that the town was much taller and much more massive in the center than we see it today, in large part because most of the third and fourth and other stories burned off in the forties and fifties. So we're, we're seeing a large building, but in perspective and in history, it's not quite that large. The second comment is one related to housing. We very systematically looked at the question of whether we're going to have housing pressures satisfied in the neighborhoods or in the town center. And we made the decision, again, Maureen and others will recall this, that we wanted to see the housing development focused in the center and we're willing to see much higher density and much larger buildings there, rather than see the neighborhoods and some of the other areas disrupted by larger buildings that don't fit those neighborhoods nearly as well. So one thing we're looking for here is in the long term, to see that the mass of housing matches across the entire area. Third point, and I would just echo the other comments, I think this new version of the design is really quite excellent. There are details that I think we can quibble about, but I would really congratulate the architectural team on the sort of an excellent piece of work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lance. We're going to open it up to the planning board now. Members of the planning board, we will unmute you.
Yeah, I'm going to be unmuting everybody as we go. Heather's hand has been on.
Are you doing one at a time, you mean?
Yeah, we're going to unmute all of us and then you may speak. I'm not going to put you in a order.
All right, it looks like DM has a lot of feedback, so we're not gonna put him on until uh, it's his turn to talk.
Heather, Hanon, and Maureen?
Um, I have a comment. I mean, I won't repeat things that were already said, I guess, but um, I actually think the roof is really busy. I think it's like a lot of different materials and like a lot going on. I don't know that that's what a historic roof would have looked like. Um, I know that we want something interesting in the roof, but this just reads as really busy to me. Um, I don't know if anyone else feels that way.
Heather, did you, um, did you wanna know what you agree with? Cause they were different.
Um, I like the landscaping. I like the rounded corners. I like breaking it up so that it reads um, more like units, residential units. Um, I like the materials. I think that's most of it.
Maureen?
Um, the things Heather Hanon just pointed out are what I like. The rounded corner, the um, materials, um, the general landscaping, although Dennis still nailed it. It was just, it's too busy. Uh, it's, this isn't the time to deal with landscaping. Um, I do like the converse place um, idea. Um, after that, uh, there's a lot here. The biggest thing is what I would describe as, maybe Brian, you could help. That slide's pretty good. But I guess I was hoping we could go to um, thirty-one site sections. Um, because there's a lot of distortion in many of these perspectives. And it's at, at the end, it's going to be the, um, can you get thirty-one up, Brian?
Yeah, it takes a little longer for some reason for some people, but it's been up immediately. Yeah, it's been, yeah.
There we are. That, um, when we get to, uh, I guess the one at the top is the one that's most useful. Sixty-one feet high. And you see what the Brown and Stanton block is. And the block, it goes to forty-four feet. And then you go over to the town hall at fifty-nine feet. It works, so sixty-one feet. This is huge. And that's just um, from the Mount Vernon Street end, which is what I'm looking at right now at the top. Um, it's on the top of the three site sections. Um, so I think uh, we've heard a number of people speak to the idea of four stories with still in the forty-some feet range, not the sixty-feet range, but in the forty-some feet, forty-eight feet uh, would be about, I think, uh, still, look at it compared to the white block next door and then the Brown and Stanton. Um, I think aiming for forty-eight uh, feet for four stories is about it for, which still is basically double the size of what's already in the town center. So um, I will go back to the purpose of the CBD zoning um, to promote and protect Winchester Center's historic resources and small town character. To me, the building that we're seeing here reminds me, it's urban in scale, um, urban in every way. It's a building that fits with what's going on now and um, being built in Waltham, which is a city. It goes with what's going on in Quincy, which is a city. Uh, this is not a city. Uh, this is a, this is a suburban. It's a commuter rail suburb. And I think we certainly would welcome more housing. We expected to see housing um, and more density on this particular site, but not at the level that's been presented here. Uh, so I also, just a few other uh, parts. I do wanna reinforce what Heather Hanon said. Uh, this roof doesn't do it for me at all. Um, this is uh, where we were aiming for roofs like the town hall, which is pitched back or Brown and Stanton block, uh, which is also pitched. Um, and it's very simple. As I think Heather Hanon just said that, it doesn't have all this busyness. Um, Dennis, I think Dale pointed out, these chimney slash piers, uh, they just aren't working at all. But also this in and out creates busyness. And then you see how these, I guess they're like a window dormer, but they're not really dormers that pop forward in front of the mansards. Again, it just doesn't work. Um, it's these, the word in the zoning bylaws, it's Dennis Carlon's word is elegant, and I don't see that this is elegant at all. So concepts, bring it down. Um, four stories, I think is plenty. The height you're now hearing um, is about as, I think, it still doubles the height of most of what's in the town center. That fourth story should be set back in some way with some kind of a roof treatment that moves it back. Um, either setback literally uh, further in from the three stories or pitched back to a point where uh, it creates a real mansard. Um, so that there is this kind of, um, what tapering or uh, reducing of the uh, massing as you uh, in that silhouette, as you move um, toward the, uh, toward the sky. So um, I guess, let me see if there was, I did make notes, so if I can just, oh, dining on the water side, I think that made sense. And I do want to get back to the idea that retail right now and where we're heading is a real question mark for me. Um, I'm still, uh, dining will work and a summer is, um, some kind of dining in this building. I hear takeout or whatever, a small um, eat-in, eat-out sort of thing. But after that, I am questioning how much retail this can, we can absorb. We already had nail salons and realtors on the first floors of our uh, commercial spaces or what could be retail spaces. Yeah, exactly. Thank you, Brian, again. And how much more retail can we carry along um, that's in this building? We know that from what we've been told in the world of this um, development, that the this um, retail is not profit-making. And we've got a lot of the spaces devoted to quote-unquote amenities and then the entrance to the parking. So at the end of the day, we're giving up a whole floor of a large footplate for the um, for basically a little retail for the town. And I do have to wonder whether there could be moving some residential to the first floor. Um, it might be a better approach. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
I agree with the residential on the first floor. I think it was for this building, I suggested entrances even.
And I thought it was a great idea, Heather. Thank you, cause you raised it first and I've given it a lot of thought.
And I also think that we're gonna be worried about retail townwide.
And then to follow up on that, keep in mind what's on the street already. You've got a fire station, a bank building. Um, and you've also got a, an office building. And then the town owns the Jenks Lot. And if we ever redevelop that, it probably would go, if the town does, it would go toward housing. So this end of the street is already, anytime you got the tail end of anything retail, it's already going to be weaker. And this is the farthest out from the center.
DM, I think it's DM's time, Brian.
Okay, I turned my mic down. Is that better?
You turned it down just a little bit more?
I can turn it down as low as you want.
Still a little low.
It's, it's, this is almost as low as I can go. How's that?
Too low.
Too low. How's that?
Let's, let's move.
Hello, can you hear me?
Four.
You can't hear me at all?
Yes.
Please, yes, proceed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so um, I had a couple of questions and they could be answered offline. Or maybe Brian, you know this, is this the same FAR as we've seen before?
Yes, the FAR that was, was both a six-story and a five-story and they were both an F R point O.
Okay, and.
Brian, can you repeat that? The statistics that you have on this, the FAR, the open space, anything that you have before we proceed?
And the number of units.
Uh, I don't have the, the, um, the art would probably better thing of that. But the only thing I can say for sure is that the FAR is a three-point-O FAR that they were going at at six. It just allowed, the six-story allowed for a larger pub uh, open space in the rear. Uh, they got direction from the board to pursue and to pursue. So that's why they came back five, it's still the same three-point-O FA.
Okay, um, well, here are my comments. Um, I, I really like this design. I think it's improved a lot over the last ones. Um, so all of the positive things that, that the rest of the board have said, the curves, the, I mean, I, I, I just like it a lot. Um, the, the chimneys, I think, um, I, I think they are a little jarring. Um, and I think that if they were reduced in size and as Jackie pointed out, maybe setback from the facade, um, they would blend in a little better. Maybe if they weren't made of brick. Um, I showed this design to someone who hasn't seen it before. And one of the things they said, which on retrospect, I should have picked up is, is they think that the front of the building along Mount Vernon Street is, it's not, um, it's kind of, I don't know if the word they used was dull, but it's not as active as the side which fronts along the um, the river, the side with all the balconies and all of that activity there. So the, the front looks a little um, static. And they were concerned that this would be too much, look, too much of a canyon. So whatever you can do to liven up that front along Mount Vernon would be great. Um, the, I don't have a problem with the height. Um, this is the PUD. We, um, I wasn't on the board when they, they drew up the regs for this part of town, but it was certainly we did, or they did, and I agree, want to put in denser housing here. I do wanna point out that one of, since we are going for a increase over the by right FAR. And this one thing that I know the developers haven't addressed, and it's because it's too, it's premature, is that um, you know, you get the, you get the extra two and a half if you um, offer more diverse housing, housing opportunities. And that would be part presumably of the actual proposal, is how they would justify um, why they're going for the extra FAR. Um, and we haven't heard that. We've been focusing on design in mass, which I think is appropriate. But that's just something to come up ahead. Um, and that's pretty much all I have to say. I, I really like the design a lot. And uh, I don't find the roof line too busy, but then again, um, I'm ignorant of these matters. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, DM. Um, I guess, um, it's my turn to speak. Um, so I'm gonna go through my notes that I have. Um, it might be a repetition of what some people had, but I wanted to make sure that the developers knew um, kind of where I'm sitting with it. First of all, I wanna commend uh, the architect for really listening to a lot of the feedback um, in the design and making modifications. There are still parts um, of the overall architecture um, and the massing that need to be worked on, but you have made tremendous progress from where you started. So I really appreciate that. Um, at the top, um, the partition walls, some people have called them chimneys. Um, they are way too heavy and they are creating a vertical rise to the building that is uh, making it look taller than it is. Um, the, I believe, uh, one of the people brought up the property lines. Um, you are moving outside of your property lines. Um, you are also taking over um, making recommendations. Um, and so going forward, I want you to make sure that you keep, uh, you figure out how to, how you're gonna do that. That calls into the select board, needs to be part of the discussion. Um, and also all those property owners who, and the businesses who are impacted by the changes of the road that you abut, um, both sides and also um, the waterway um, and the public walking path for the town. Um, that is outside of the planning board, the roads, um, that's the select board. So just wanna make sure you're aware of that. Um, I said it in our last meeting with the PUD and DM just reiterated as well. Um, it is expected, um, as stated in the PUD, that um, any residential component will provide a diversity of housing types, price points and sizes to accommodate wide ranges of ages and economic levels that currently in your proposal is not uh, shown. The plans are all, all the units are very similar for the second up to the fourth floor. And then the fifth half floor is all penthouses, uh, I believe. With that in mind, if, and as Jackie pointed out, it says with the PUD, the planning board may authorize um, a PUD. Um, and the, I think that actual is um, may authorize additional FAR. Um, we, it's not required of us to do that. Um, and so I really want, um, either if you're gonna go for this FAR, you really have to do that. I expect affordable housing in this more than what is just the baseline for this. Um, if you're not interested in doing that, um, and you're gonna stand in the special permit, um, then obviously a floor has to come off. Um, but right now with what you're proposing, um, you, it, and when you look at the massing and you look, you're, you're not meeting the PUD requirements as of right now in the proposal. Um, just the basic general overview of it. So I wanna bring that to your attention um, before you proceed, um, going further with this. And if you are not able to do that, um, or you're not interested and you wanna keep it all um, high-end, um, then um, I would get a, get a story off of it, um, get it down to three and a half stories. Currently, I'm counting it as actually four and a half, cause it's set back on the top. Um, and that also will bring you much better, closer in line with the definition of massing for the center business district. Because the definition of massing for the downtown specifically says that you will relate to the historical character and mass of the Winchester CBD. And when you look at the sections, which this is the first time we've seen it, the massing on all four elevations is not taking into account the historic um, the historical character and mass in the town center. Um, I know Lance mentioned um, that we had a higher height historically. That was actually only three, three stories. Um, so you are two stories above that historical line before. Um, there are a couple of buildings that are tall. One of them is actually the one that's in this pink off to the right. Um, uh, that's not a historic building, but it's off to the right here. You can see it in the picture. And when you look at the section, you can see how much bigger you are. And so really with that massing and um, you want as much coverage as you have now, I would actually say take a floor off. Um, stay with your high-end condos if that's what you prefer. Um, and uh, you, you will be there. Um, with the um, the towers, um, they're reading uh, the top floor as of right now, the fifth. I'd like it to see at the fourth, but um, they're reading tall. Um, and I think it might be the bands that you have at the top, um, above the windows and stuff, which is pulling it up versus pushing it down as typically you would um, on that top floor when you're trying to have it read more of built in the roofs. If you did drop it down a floor, I actually, I agree with Dennis that it would be excellent if you had um, a rooftop terrace around that mechanical up there. Um, I've seen amazing examples of it um, in smaller communities where they have left that as open space for the residents. Um, so that is just something to consider, um, to give you more amenities for those who are in there. I also agree with Heather and Maureen also um, about the retail. I would be kind of confident in myself um, that if you put a restaurant in the back on the water, there is, there is that the public space should be on the, with the most sunlight. And Jamie did point that out. If you put a restaurant in the back and made, took over that retail, put residential there, got rid of a top floor that um, you, you might be able to get what you need to get out of this uh, property. Um, let's see, um, I think, I think that's it. Um, the, just all the residents who are here and listening. Um, and uh, the by right is um, forty feet in the east core, which is where we currently are. Um, special permit is what will bring it up to um, forty-eight feet. And if they wanna go um, forty-eight feet, and if they wanna go for the PUD, that is what they're doing. So there are three different steps um, that they have opportunities to do. Um, well, actually, it's, yeah, so I just, they're, they're going for the most of everything. They have to hit it out of the park to be able to do this. And um, and to meet the, and hitting it out of the park is an expression a lot of people have used on me. That's why I'm using it. But it's actually, they really have to fall directly in line with the um, the zoning as it's written. Um, so uh, I'm going to open it up, cause I know David has had his hand raised for a very long time. Um, and make sure that he's all set, so we can move on to um, six fifty-four Main Street. David, are you all set?
Thank you so much. And I know you've got a big agenda, so I'll be very quick. First of all, I wanna thank everyone for their comments. Um, very, very helpful. There are just a few things that I wanted to say. I think that a lot of the commentary about um, the uh, the chimneys and uh, some of those elements uh, being set back are, I take those very much to heart. And I think that those are things that we can absolutely work on and develop as we take this design further. Um, the issue of putting the uh, restaurant space on the water side is something we considered. Um, although I think we were told that um, that, you know, that, that the retail really needed to sort of support the retail and that that might be a difficult place uh, to actually. to actually have a restaurant that, that wasn't visible and in people's minds eye. So I want to just mention that. A couple of people did suggest that some of the renderings were misleading or, 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 um, not accurate. I want to make sure that everyone understands this is built in and out a literal 3D model of the entire town of Winchester. And that all the perspective views that we're showing are in fact accurate, as are the sections. And, um, some of the techniques that we use to illustrate certain elevations are very technical drawings. They're not intended to mislead in any way. They're intended to focus attention on the portion of the drawing that we're focusing on. So these are things that I think are important for the public to, to, to understand. Yes, uh, when you're, uh, standing down Mount Vernon Street at in front of a two-story building, looking at a four-story building, the two-story building will be larger in your foreground than the four-story building in the distance. That's actually just, that's part of how you perceive the world. So we just wanted, I just want to be clear about that, that we're not trying to mislead anyone here. Very appreciative about the, uh, comments about the, the, the progress that we've made and the curves and, and potentially simplifying the roof scape. Um, I think the question about, uh, you know, we worked very hard to get the six down to five. The question about five down to four is obviously something that the development team will have to advise us on as we, uh, go forward. But, um, I do want to, uh, do want to thank, uh, the folks, uh, for their commentary. And, um, know that, as we said at the beginning of this, this is a pre-filing concept design. And, uh, it was really intended, it's really intended, um, to, um, make sure that everyone is comfortable with what we would actually be filing or submitting in concept. So I don't know, um, if Ian or anybody has questions about that, uh, in terms of the direction that you're giving us to go forward. But I, I just wanted to, uh, answer those questions. And if there are any others, I'm, I'm here to answer them as well. Anyone?
Uh, nobody has their hand up at the moment, but we also are, we are getting a little crunched.
So thank you. I'll just say.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I got muted and had to unmute myself. Um, I just want to make sure, um, I don't see Ian raising his hand. I'm assuming he's all set. And, um, that if he has any questions, he'll reach out to you, Brian. Hereafter, if he needs any clarity of any comments, again, to the public, please, if on this particular, and on the next one, we're going to discuss on ten Converse or in six fifty-four Main, if you have any additional comments you would like to give to the planning board, to please, um, also, to please send those to the planning board, um, at Winchester.us. We all get it. The town planner also receives it and we can also submit it onward to the development team. Thank you very much, everyone, for your time and let's move on to six fifty-four Main Street. Yep.
It just as a wrap up. So the next stage will be when the time comes, and I think we could run a hearing, it's going to have to be after the emergency has been lifted. And a public, um, a true public meeting can be held. So we're expect, and at that point we would have a filing and at that point we would enter a formal process with a formal hearing. Butters get notified and so on.
To, to follow up on that, Maureen, as of right now, yes, the planning board has determined we are not taking up any new applications during this time. And that is currently as a law stand, that is, uh, within the right. It's just not, um, for an application process, it is not, this is not a cohesive way to go forward, um, after an application. So that's the way that the current planning board has agreed to it. However, we don't know what's going to happen or how things are proceeding. Um, but that's as we currently stand and, um, that is how we're moving forward. If we get more information from the state or they change, and they say we have to start taking applications or any of that happens and they make us adhere to the dead, the timeframes, that then we will have to change that approach. So as of right now, we are not, the planning board has determined as, as a team that we are not going to be taking on any applications at this time. And that is allowed by, with the state legislation right now. And if that changes, um, we will have to proceed.
Right. And then, thank you. And then that, it's good to clarify that. And then the other thing is that I know our zoning bylaw asks for perspectives, but a lot of us have discussed the, the merits, demerits, whatever of the, um, of the perspective drawings, but I've found that the sections are actually much more helpful. And I would love to see, for example, a section on Mount Vernon Street that includes the buildings on the opposite side of the street. We just all got a chat message, um, questioning what's going on. When you look at the relative size of the savings bank versus the new construction. And that, um, whatever we think about perspectives and, I mean, I know as well as anybody about perspective drawings, but it's just the, um, sections ultimately give us the best sense of relative scale. So let me just throw that out as a request to the team and, um, to the board, that I think we want to, um, ask for those.
Sure, we can do that. And I just wanted to note that we provided the perspectives from eye level, from the locations that we discussed. And so we, we were trying to, uh, meet your requirements and certainly do more sections, not a problem.
Thank you so much. Um, so let's move on to six fifty-four Main Street. Brian? I believe, is Ian kicking that one off? Same procedure as well.
Correct. Uh, Ian, uh, should be able to, um, go right now. Ian, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yep, go right ahead.
Uh, I was, um, learning how to raise my hand, forgive me, um, with regard to ten Converse. If we, we started with the board encouraging us to go to six stories. And later the board suggested we go to five stories. We spent a great deal of time and money doing that. It's disappointing to hear that we have a great design and that it is suggested that we reduce the size of the project significantly. If we do that, it wouldn't make economic sense to tear down the existing building. So it's likely that, uh, future proposal for this site under those kinds of constraints, having been encouraged by the board. And this is for those who are aware, this is videotaped, uh, in the past. It's a very clear record that the board asked us to go to six stories. We spent a great deal of money at six stories. They asked us to go to five. We spent a great deal of money at five. We certainly appreciate the board's input. We've been working very hard with the board's consultant. We've had, I believe, five meetings, Brian, with you and Dennis on this project. And at this point, given the comments of the board, we're going to have to regroup and understand what it is Winchester will approve. Because the, this building that we've proposed is within the context, and I grant the chair's point about the fact that it is a PUD. And a PUD has many requirements, including the requirement for fifteen percent affordable. And I'm not sure that that was, uh, recognized to the public that this building, this proposal has fifteen percent affordable. So we will have to regroup and see where we go because, uh, frankly, it feels as though, we don't quite know what the board is directing us to do. So Heather, I would ask you as chair, what would you have us do, please?
Um, so that was the first time you've ever mentioned that it had fifteen percent affordable in it. And then I, I meant.
Architect in the beginning said that.
I mean, I, but so missed that comment. Um, but okay, so there's fifteen percent affordable. When you look at your plans, do you have a diversity of size?
Yes.
Where's your diversity in size? You have?
Well, the, these are, these are lines on a drawing at this point, but we, we have ones and twos and threes. So I'm not sure now is the, the time. We've worked very hard with the board. We've worked very hard with the board's consultants. We spent a great deal of money. We've tried very hard to respect the town. And at this point, we, we get to a point where we leave the existing building. We go to, either somewhere, you know, in your suggestion, we go to, um, uh, two point, two point five, two point O. The public spaces, we won't be able to afford what we have proposed. So it's a challenge for you and the board and the town to give us guidance. We were following, the town spent ten years of master planning and then approved in two thousand and fifteen, a very strong, we'll see this in the next presentation. The guidelines that we've been following now for better than eight months. And we believe this is a beautiful design. I think everybody's commented on that. We haven't been trying to push any limits. You suggested a six-story building. We bought it, brought it to five. We had more open space at six. Which would is, was allowed under the PUD.
I hate to say this, but in interest of six fifty-four, I think they're getting the short end.
No, I'm very happy to move on. We, we need guidance from the board.
Agree.
Um, all right. Um, the board, um, has not discussed as a group anything. It's just, you just heard from us points. And, um, I, I think what you're looking for is us to come together and come to a consensus of where of that, of those points being thrown in at you because you were pretty much bulleted at, um, and bullet points coming at you along with from the residents. And the board needs to come together and say, this is what our expectations are and lay it out very clearly so that the delivery meets that going forward. But at this point, we don't have time to have the board do that. But I'm willing to have the board discuss as a group hereafter, um, at a later meeting, if that's acceptable to the board.
Yes, I would love to have that discussion.
It's Maureen. There's one, um, I guess two points. One is that first of all, I never was on board with six stories. So, um, I want to make that really clear. It was something where I said, well, you can show it. I like the oval shape. I remember seeing the site plan saying, I like that, but I had doubts from the beginning. And I, uh, at the very first opportunity, I said, this is just too big. So, um, I just for the record on that. But, uh, secondly is there, this really, we've had the best turnout right now and we're still on Zoom and there's still been nothing in the Winchester papers. This is still basically unknown to most of the community. So I think for some, it's not unreasonable for the planning board also to start to see what the response is from the community. And we're just starting to get that now. So, um, this is a decision that affects the entire, uh, future of the, of the appearance of Winchester, the entire future of Winchester. So I don't think that's something that we do lightly and just, um, by ourselves. I think this input has been helpful. And maybe we are going to need some more before we even wrap this up and, um, decide what, just how big is acceptable, uh, for Winchester.
Well, I, I, I think that there is an element of fairness that we have to have and that this has been, we've had multiple public sessions on this project over the last many months. I think it's, it's, we can't determine based just on those who are appearing on Zoom tonight, how many people have been following via Windcam in the past. If there's a problem with the community not knowing about it, then that's a problem that the planning board hasn't addressed. I don't. So I, I, I think there are some, the planning board has not had a single voice on this. I certainly have no problem with the current plan. And I think we need to meet and we should do so soon to come to some consensus. And I won't say anything anymore until we have that meeting.
Sounds good. So we'll do that. Um, all right. Let's move on to six fifty-four Main Street.
Many thanks. And we do appreciate the effort the board has put in and, um, Brian and Dennis. The next presentation is for six fifty-four Main or Fells Hardware. And I'm sure that you all know Kevin Ryan and his son Andrew. I'm very pleased to say that the beloved, uh, hardware store is expected to come back into new quarters in the finished building. So to put our presentations in context, we'd like to review briefly for those who are unfamiliar with it, the planning board's presentation to town meeting in two thousand and fifteen, when they suggested, the planning board suggested the zoning that is the context for these, um, projects. So Ted, if we can, uh, I think Ted is running that.
Can you, can you hear me, Dan? Okay, yes, I think, um, Brian, I would need to share my screen if that's appropriate.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you.
See, I think you need to unlock permission for that. I'm still disabled, Brian. I know you're working on it, but. Brian, is it, just let me know when I should share.
Should be able to share now.
All right. I'm going to give it a shot. Okay, can you see a cover slide dated twelve May?
Yep, we're good.
Okay, all right.
And there's the team. So the team for this project is very similar to the last project, except that we add an extraordinarily talented architect whose voice you're hearing by the name of Ted Tlukian. So Ted, just for context, I'd like to go, if we could please, to, uh, a couple of the other slides. We'll go through these very quickly. So the plan, planning board, uh, in, uh, at town meeting in two thousand and fifteen, these are the planning board slides. They, they remind town meeting that the planning started in two thousand and two. And then if you could keep going, Ted, please, there was a sense that the zoning was badly out of date. Only two developments had been, um, developed in the past thirty years. So Ted will zip through these. So the idea was to add residential housing while of course, and, and revitalize the retail and the restaurant businesses. And maintain, of course, the feel and look of town. So residential housing, the idea at town meeting was to add two hundred residential projects and two hundred units, excuse me, over ten to fifteen years. And I might remind you, this was five years ago. So the idea was to encourage mixed use and that's what we did have done in our projects to encourage retail and restaurant spaces at the streetscape with residential above. So we have been following this advice from the planning board to town meeting. We also heard about the aesthetic. Here you see the idea that, that we were talking about. Ted, I think we can move on. So the aesthetic respecting, in this case, the wonderful old Winchester Savings Bank. Here were the, uh, three areas that were determined to be appropriate for increased, uh, development. And we are in two of those. And, uh, we also, the, this is, this slide is the town, is the planning board presenting to town meeting for the new zoning with a recommendation of a height of plus or minus fifty-five feet. So these are the planning board's own, uh, slides. And of course, the planning board also appropriately suggested that they wanted to include fifteen percent affordable housing. And both our projects do that. And we're pleased and proud to do that. What also changed was that the permit granting authority for the, uh, special permits changed from the zoning board of appeals where it had be, been. from the zoning board of appeals where it had be, been and is traditionally to, for the CBD, that special permit granting authority changed to the planning board. So the planning board now controls the development within the central business district. And this was the proposal from the planning board to town meeting. And this set of proposals was approved by a 92% vote at town meeting. So clearly, this was the will of the town at the time. So with that, Ted, I'd love to turn it over to you to show them a very exciting design for six fifty four Main.
Well, thank you, Ian, and thank you to the board and to the public who are attending this evening. I know it's a very late evening and I thank you for your patience and I will try to go through this very briefly and as quickly as I can. And I look forward to any of your questions at the end of the evening. We're going to do a very brief overview of the existing condition, a recap of the CBD guidelines. We'll look at the design and then ask for some questions and guidance. This is for everyone who knows the site location, but it's for our virtual audience and we can come back to them if there is any particular questions. Let me just get back to this. So these are views looking up and down Main Street. And of course, we recognize the importance of this site and what it means to Winchester as a gateway site, reinforcing its edges to the cultural district and to the central business district as noted in blue and orange around the perimeter. Yet, you know, we often use precedent images to reinforce and express the type of pedestrian experience that we're looking for as a part of the ground floor at Main Street. Yet throughout the process, we've looked to the town zoning bylaws, elements of form, which really is a great descriptive document pointing to the qualities that are part of the town's past, present and future architecture, which really make Winchester so unique and special. And this has really been central to our design review discussions, and I thank you for this excellent document. Additionally, our process has been very transparent and collaborative, as you know, and has been pointed out. We have spent a great deal of time in discussions over the last few months. We've received feedback from three pre-application meetings, as noted, as well as five design review meetings with the town consultant, Dennis Carlon, as well as Brian Tocelli, the town planner. And I think throughout it, there have been three basic areas of concentration, which has lot, has been discussion around scale. We started with a five-story building and reduced it to four. We also looked to the board and understood the really importance of sixty-three Vine Street and its preservation. And as well as looking at architecture that could be a transition between the residential fabrics and elements along Vine Street and the commercial elements along Main Street. But ultimately, I think the architecture that we really appreciate is something that has civic presence. We hear a lot about a mix of uses and a mix of types of housing. And ultimately, architecture that has rhythm and scale and is a part of the context. And so with that, I'm going to point to the site plan at first, just to orient everyone. This is Main Street, Vine Street and Elmwood. We basically broken the building down into four elements. The Main Street building, which you see here, which has two retail spaces, a residential building which flanks Elmwood and parts of Vine Street, which is a residential garage entrance, as well as some residential units and units above. The sixty-three Vine Street restoration and, which is all shared cohesively through a central shared courtyard. I'm going to briefly run through the floor plans. This is the basement floor. We are looking at actually automated parking. There's storage for the retail as well as the tenants and as well as parking spaces for thirty-seven to forty-one parking spots at the lower level, as well as one additional spa on the first floor. This is the retail spaces, A and B, as well as the courtyard space and residential areas. And just to note throughout the process that this site is in a FEMA floodplain. And so the finished floor elevations of the retail and residential floors have to be at a minimum of two feet above the finished grade, which is along Main Street. As you move to the upper floors, we have a mix of residential units that range in one to two bedrooms that range in size from 500 to 1,200 square feet with a mix of recess decks and flush balconies. An open space at a lot for 13% with a 15-foot minimum and open to the sky, which exceeds 25%. So as I move through that quickly, I'm going to provide what I'd like to call a virtual walk around the block as seed from the eyes level. And I'm going to begin on Elmwood and then will lead us down Main Street and then end on Vine Street. And what this, I'm going to try to do is explain the pedestrian experience and the materials and some of the details that we had looked at. What you're seeing here is the residential building and the commercial building next to each other, separated by what we call a void or slot of glass balconies. And we looked at minimizing the building height by expressing gabled roofs and dormers, textured masonry and cornice lines. And ultimately, that, I think this slide is a blow up of this corner looking from Elmwood, which we seek to create details that relate a lot to the human dimensions. Forms that are familiar, as you see with the dormers and the sloped roofs, that as the building increases in heights, we, we tend to try to make it more slender towards the top, following the guidelines as pointed out. And this, we understand, is really helping to create the animated roof line silhouettes that make Winchester so special. We're looking to include New England authentic red brick, which is sympathetic to the general downtown palette. And as we develop the project in the future phases, really advance the detailing and the corbeling and the palette in such that it really enriches the overall effect of the masonry with light and shadow. Operable windows with a balance of flush and recessed balconies that are scaled directly to the character of the adjacent spaces. And at times chimney elements that flank living spaces. As we move around Elmwood, this is a shot looking up to a residential entry, which is behind the street trees. And I think what's special is the slope of the street. And we tried to create an experience that would lead people up along some of the greened areas, creating dormers that are double height and single height and balconies that overlook the long views to the street that bring people into their entry. And as you move back farther away from Main Street, you begin to see the transition. And I think we'll begin to develop that slightly more where the tones of brick between the residential building and let's say the commercial building are slightly offset from each other to give a diverse character of color and palette. We also are looking, as we move towards the commercial area, to include larger windows that maximize the visibility and transparency through the ground floor retail. We've got retractable lateral arm awnings that really help offer, you know, an active and vital marketplace at the ground level that supports the central business district and Winchester Cultural District guidelines. And as well as sign panels that will be filled in by future tenants or, as well as windows and access areas along the spaces at the ground floor. So as we move back along Main Street, you begin to see some of the other considerations that we were look to. There's a great beginning of street trees to the north that we want to continue. We set that, set back our building approximately 10 feet overall from the face of building to the curb line to allow for accessible walkway, as well as for the development of trees over time and their mature growth. The central element of the, the Main Street building is an expressive hip roof that is floating in some way that helps to provide a presence. We were told that this was of interest to create a sloping roof that was receding back between the receding balconies. And as we look closer, I think this is the opportunity where we can develop the balconies and the operable windows and the doors and the recess and the brick corbeling to really make this somewhat special and unique. This is a view from across the street. And I'm just going to walk you down through Main Street and the larger openings that have really great transparency to the retail level. The trees are ordered to the rhythm of the structure that respond to the street. And moving back, looking back away and even farther back to the north, we've beveled the walls to allow for visual dynamic edge along this line. And this allows us to provide better visibility to sixty-three Vine Street as we move towards its face. And I think this is also, as we move back to some of our earlier meetings, has been of strong interest. And I think this is where the development of the project will be really exciting, where we can look at the forensics of what's behind these aluminum siding and understand, you know, what, what is once there and develop and replace in kind the trim and the window sashes and the operable shutters. And so certainly a part of the, central part of this change is going to be the entry. And possibly behind these materials, we'll be able to find the surrounds and the front pieces and the casings that, that make these entrances into Greek Revival buildings so special. Hidden behind some of that as well is this entablature and pediment on the side elevations and extensions of the eaves. And this is then moving up around Vine Street and the character of the dormers and the eve lines and the open balconies and the recessed courtyard as we move away. And I think this will be a special place where people can enjoy that open space. And this is moving more to the north. And I think we took particular attention to try to drop in, in certain locations, gable roofs that respond to the proportion of the gable roofs along Vine Street. And so that there's a sort of a slight dance as you move down the hill away from the building. I like to conclude with a few other slides. This is an existing aerial. And I think, as you see here, there's certainly a lot of open gravel, undeveloped areas. And what we see is a great opportunity, going to slide here between the two, where we can infill this site in a way that makes a strong relationship to the Elmwood and Vine residential character. And as well begins to make connections to six sixty-six in its scale and mass, as well as to six twelve Main Street. And these are some street elevations and sections along Vine Street. And as well along Elmwood, and it's really a very strong topography that allows the, the buildings to sort of walk down the hill. And we're looking to advance that and really fit into the context. And so in conclusion, as a design recap of the proposed building, going to highlight a few of the design proposal elements. Sixty-three Vine Street will be rebuilt and rent, and renovated. There'll be two commercial spaces. Thirty-eight to forty-two dwelling units that are one to two bedrooms, as well as 15% affordable. There'll be thirty-eight to forty-two off-street parking spots, a two-point-five F A R, a 13% open space at a minimum of fifteen by fifteen and 25% open space that is to the sky. And a building height at the midpoint of the Main Street building that is 56 feet. And thank you very much. I hope that gave us some additional time and I would like to open up to questions and guidance. And I believe Dennis, you may be jumping in now too as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ted. Let's open it up to Dennis.
Thank you. I know we don't, we're short for time, so I'll do this as quickly as I can. I, I wanted to emphasize that retail was a critical factor in the master plan. Some towns will get retail. Winchester is absolutely appropriate for downtown retail. Malls are dying. Yes, people are using computers, but they want that sense of community. Wealthy communities with beautiful architecture, historic architecture or prime, if you take advantage of it. If you don't, the next town will. And your own report said that back when I started the work. This is a very complex site. It's eight-sided, has a retaining wall in portions at the back. It slopes up. The dimensions, the thickness of the site in places is not your typical development depth for housing. And this design has evolved in a rather dramatically impressive way over time, and I appreciate that. The the Elmwood Street, Ted, could you go to the site plan? It's interesting, the, there is no existing sidewalk on Elmwood Street. What you see there now is we're building just shy of, the, the proposal is just shy of the property line on Elmwood. There is no sidewalk, so the town and the development team have to work together on getting that built. It's in many ways an illegal street. And the reason I'm mentioning that is the profile of the turn of Elmwood is going to be altered. Thank you, Ted, for doing that. Going to be altered and we could actually increase that side of the turn. We have to have a fire engine dimension. We get all that. But rebuilding that actually helps. The notion of taking this building, this eight-sided site and making it feel like three different buildings. The, of course, the historic house, the Main Street component, which is only commercial at the ground floor. And then the more residential infill on Elmwood that picks up of the building that's recently under construction. And articulating it differently gets kudos left and right. Now, I have to be honest. I actually think Main Street, I know people won't agree based on the other discussion. It should be five stories, the Main Street component. And the building connecting back on Elmwood in the four range, which is what Ted has at the moment. That is not what's being proposed, but we wanted to articulate the Main Street building as a more town center building and the residential townhouse expression beyond that. Ted, if you could go to a rendering of the front. Keep going. One more, I think. Two more. Thank, that's good. So the notion of the roof being different, as you can see there, that's perfect. Makes sense. Now, we've talked about this, the height of that slope roof. Is a slope roof necessary in the front? Maybe on Main Street, it's a flat roof. But we're trying to emphasize that it's residential. But the notion was, this goes from approximately four and a half stories in reality, with the slope roof, if you count the whole height, down to four stories that is articulated with dormers and gables. And hopefully you'll feel reads as three and a half stories into the hill. You can see in the background in this view, if you look at the existing multifamily on Vine Street between the red brick that Ted has put on the building and the newer building to the left, you'll see that the retaining wall is quite high. So this is literally built into the hill. This shows, this view also shows something that we've worked with quite a bit is how do you integrate a ramp? Because this complex site is order also in a flood zone. I believe it's 20 inches, 22 inches. I don't recall now. Ted has incorporated a series of stairs, which makes sense at the, near the middle of the building, retail on either side. But trying to include a ramp as gracefully as possible that comes from, leads to downtown, or if you're coming from the center of town, the train, you just continue to walk up. This has been a problem that I've had, even when I did the urban design for the site, the town design, is how do you integrate that in an elegant way? Yeah, could you, it needs more work. We'll get there. Articulating the storefronts a little bit more might also need to be done. Ted has begun to do that. Let me see if I need now. I think one of the advantages of a hardware store is that is a need. That is a destination. At this end of the retail of downtown. Just like a quality restaurant that's visible can be at the other end near Town Hall. So this is a built-in, built-in attraction that to me makes this retail work. And the potential of this retail working. And how we display that retail will be developed and refinement. Here you can see the awnings are out, although it's hard to read in the rendering on the right-hand side. And obviously. There'll be more refinement and your thoughts will help dramatically on this. By the way, we've never shown the master plan. The town design plan, but in the long run. We don't know when, where the gas station is. Is a site that can have housing, but hopefully set back with a residential plaza circled by retail, limited retail. So this is a little. This is existing with the new building being proposed. But when that building gets built, there'll be even more pressure to get rid of one of the five gas stations on this block. Thank you.
Thank you very much Dennis. So we're going to do the same thing that we did before. Currently, we, if you want to raise your hand, we'll mark you down, then we'll all unmute everyone. So those who do want to speak. Can and are unable to or don't know how to un- raise their hands can then just say their name. We'll put you on a list. And we'll go through the list of those who want to speak currently. Those who have their hand raised is Jackie Welch and Jamie DeValle. Also, we have Lucy. No last name, my apologies Lucy. And those are the three people as of right now.
And John Stevens has mentioned he would like to speak. So that's four right now. I'm going to unmute everybody if you could. Again, turn your maybe volume down a little bit so that we can actually hear others speaking without feedback. So as of right now, it's just Jackie, Jamie, John and Lucy. And here I'm going to unmute everybody right now. If you would like to speak, please state your name.
Hi, I'm Lucy.
You Lucy.
Yes, we have Lucy is speaking. Anyone else out there that would like to speak, please say your name.
Jackie Welch.
Go ahead Jackie.
I think he's just asking for names.
Right, I'm asking for people that are not Jackie, not Jamie, not John Stevens and not Lucy. Other people who would like to speak, please say your name. Okay, that makes it easy. We have four people that are going to speak. I'm going to mute everybody again and we're going to do the same three minutes each. Jackie Welch, you raised your hand first. So you are going to go first in just a second.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Go right ahead, everyone should be able to hear you.
Okay, great. Just to reiterate what I mentioned before, thank you plant, planning board for all the hard work you do for the town. On a continuing basis, it's extremely impressive and obviously a huge service to the town. Thank you also to the. The team who has put forth this project. Thank you for considering investing in Winchester. I just have a few comments. One, you know, and I, I have limited time, so. I'm just kind of highlighting a few things that I wanted to point out. So the scale and massing of the building, even though the heights come down. Is, is concerning just the way it looks visually. I mean, it's obviously, I'm assuming the planning board will be. Ensuring that all the dimensional requirements would be met in a final plan, but as the renderings depict, it sort of evidences that. The scale and massing are, you know, as far to the, as close to the. Property lines as possible. And given the height, it is obviously a lot of scale and a lot of mass and a lot of building. So I point that out. A couple of things more specific, those are concerned despite what any, you know, single dimensional requirement or single height might allow. It's still the case that for this footprint, literally the entire footprint would be building other than. The courtyard open space, which I'll get to in a second. So. And I think visually, it's just a lot on a parcel. And not as consistent with some of the other parcels in town that, that have a little bit more. Even more than maybe required, but setback and more open space. But in any event, more specifically, so. I guess one of my questions is really what is going on with the roof? It seems so high. Really, it's like four stories and a higher roof than, not just a flat roof, but any roof. I'm assuming that the mechanicals may be in there. But you know, I guess I, my overall comment is, does it have to be that high? I'm assuming that design wise, I was trying to like give a proportionality to the slope with the height of the building, but. It seems like it's just adding a lot of height, which may not, you know, be necessary and it, and it. Even though it's set back and on a slope, it still makes the overall building very high. You know, in contrast to the back of the building, which seems as was pointed out in the presentation more at, you know, closer to the three and a half. Stories. Another concern I had was with respect to the vehicular lift in the parking. I didn't know and I won't take the. Time to kind of do a kind of Q and A with the developer, but I just asked that the planning board carefully look at the. How many spots would we be reliant on the vehicular lift? Will, is that vehicular lift going to have an attendant? You know, how many, will any spots not be reliant on a lift? And anytime there's a lift, I think a lot of the. Kind of experience shows that it just introduces another kind of convenience or slash inconvenience factor. And realistically, in many instances involve, it results in more use of on-street parking. And one of my issues with that is not only because of what the neighborhood, but also because the hardware store, as was pointed out in the presentation. Is a vital resource in the town and people love supporting it. And they also rely on on-street parking to use it. So. If the customers are needing to kind of compete with folks who are either visiting people in this large building. Or residents who just don't want to deal with the mechanical lift in the parking garage. Then that, that's a concern for the town. And then finally, as far as the open space, I think the presentation indicated something about twenty-five percent to the sky and fifteen percent. And respectfully, I was just a little confused by that because it seems like. I'm assuming that the open space is the courtyard in the back, which is, you know, certainly a nice feature, but. I'm, I'm assuming that's the only open space and then whether or not that would be. Available for use by everyone in the building. And I'm assuming that the creation of that open space result, would result from taking off part of that. Historic residence. Anyway, thank, thank you for your time and I appreciate your patience. Thank you. I'm muting myself.
Thanks Jackie. I guess there will be an opportunity, I guess, for response, but we're going to try to get through all these three other people. Jamie, Jamie DeValle. You are next.
Me?
Yep, go for it Jamie.
Okay, um, yeah, so I agree with Jackie that it seems a bit big, but I must say I'm quite pleased with this design. I like the views down Elmwood. I like how the building is articulated with gables. I love the red brick. I like a lot of what I see. I think it is really maxed out though size-wise, like I do have reservations about that, but I think this is such an improvement. Over what we saw a few weeks ago. Yeah, I just, I really, really like a lot. What I do feel uncomfortable with is more. Just kind of picky architecture things. I agree that the standing seam roof looks. Too tall. And I realize it's trying to be a, something of a light pavilion on top of a three-story building. I would prefer that the building be three stories, but I actually think this is. Really well worked out in terms of all the complications of the site. I also find the Main Street facade. A little vertical, like the, the windows, I think are from ceiling to floor, which I think would be made for really nice daylight in the living units and I. Agree with that, but it seems like some of the openings might be made wider and we have fewer of the, the marching of the vertical elements. Happy to hear the hardware store plans to stay. I don't know, I just have way more positive reaction to this. I love the view of the gable from the neighborhood above. Also, I want to say I am not in the neighborhood above. I live over on Southern Dix Terrace and I think. What the neighbors think about the building should weigh more than my satisfaction with it. So as a resident of Winchester, I think this is on the right track.
Thanks Jamie for your comment. We will now be moving on to Lucy and then to John Stevens. Lucy, I'm going to unmute you right now. Okay, the floor is yours Lucy.
Okay, I'm the neighbor on fifty-one One Street. Okay, anyway, all these buildings currently built, well, seems too big for me, for my house. Because there's already, I think, including Commerce Place, this one, the one that's like currently built near my home. There's, I think all those, we cannot like assuming that. All those people living here don't have kids. Those kids will go to Lincoln School. Has the town considering like whether Lincoln School can hold the capacity? And another thing is, okay, traffic. I think nobody is as good as me be familiar with the traffic here. Because almost like, because on One Street, there's the, you know, that temple for like. Like Jewish temple. So all those will be a big traffic on certain days or on like, you know, the rush hours. The One Street, I think maybe when the building is built up, there'll be like blocking on the road. And there's a lot of inconveniences. And because, you know, the hardware store also used like off-street parking. We, I can imagine, I, I'm like planning to take pictures from now and down, but then there's the coronavirus thing. But those things I, I'm seeing it like every week. This is like a very unsafe. And like very inconvenient for the residents on Vine Street. And also One Street parking itself right now already occupied all those commuters. Like I think later on, all those buildings, residents, friends will occupy. One Street parking has the town considering giving Vine Street special parkings for the residents on One Street. So all these are like, I think need to be considered. I, I personally, I, I do think CBD should be developed. But developed to what level and how the town plan all this education like capacity. All this parking capacity, traffic things. All these things need to be considered to like make sure that, you know, we are living in a safe area. Okay, that, that's all for me.
Thanks.
Thank you Lucy. Moving on to John Stevens.
Thank you very much Brian. I appreciate certainly the volunteer work by the planning board. If I recall correctly, the compensation for the job is. Only the satisfaction that comes from decisions that you are comfortable with. I also want to thank Ian Gillespie and his development team. I think the buildings look nice. I'm not an architect, as probably you know, I'm a litigator, something like an alligator, but probably not quite as polite. With respect to six fifty-four Main Street in particular. I wanted to turn to the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw. Ian has been careful to point out that the bylaw was years in the making. And that it was approved by ninety-two percent of town meeting members. I would only add that there have been amendments since to that zoning bylaw. And it would be appropriate to consider such amendments. When looking at the proposal for six fifty-four Vine Street. The difficulty with the North Corridor, the North Main Street development. Is that the West Side has a residential neighborhood immediately adjacent to it. That is not the case with the East Side. And therefore, it is appropriate for the West Side to have the same sorts of limits that have already been set. For the town common area. And that is a proposal that you have seen previously. In article number six, which is the citizens petition. What I'd like to do now is try to go quickly through that portion of the zoning bylaw. That portion of section seven, if you will, that seems to me to apply most directly to six fifty-four Main Street. On page seven nineteen, seven point three point fifteen point five, general standards for site plan review. One is traffic circulation access. Lucy has alluded to the problems that further development will create. First of all, the parking is not adequate for the number of vehicles. One might reasonably anticipate for the structure in question. I just saw. A flyer from Ian's group suggesting that. The buildings at thirty-six to forty Elmwood will be priced at, starting at nine sixty-nine. I can't imagine any of those persons occupying any of those condos not having at least two vehicles. I think the same problem occurs at six fifty-four Main Street. And for that reason. Well, Winchester doesn't have enough downtown parking already and this will simply exacerbate the problem. The board has seen my photos of traffic, traffic at the intersection of Vine and Main. Is a problem now, will continue to be a problem as long as fells is the corner. I appreciate the fact that Mr. Gillespie and his design team. Has been willing to move the entrance to the garage onto Elmwood. Of course, folks on Elmwood may have some different views of that. Turning to page seven twenty-two, in particular, section seven point three point seventeen, design review guidelines. The objectives of the CBD do not support isolated individual architectural statements that relate only to themselves. Sixty-four Main really is one of those individual statements that relates to something else by virtue of the recent construction of thirty-six. Dash forty Main Street. Otherwise, it would be fairly isolated. The structures are supposed to be conceived and executed. Now I'm now on page seven twenty-three, conceived and executed to the mutual benefit. Of its immediate neighbors. It seems to me, given what we've seen from the presentation, that there's no question. But that the value of fifty-one Vine Street will absolutely be diminished by the fact that it is going to be surrounded. Surrounded by another building. Compared, for example.
John, sorry to interrupt. I'm just going to give you a two-minute warning or if you need, if you need more time, you're just over almost five minutes right now.
I apologize Brian.
That's okay. We just want, we want to make sure that everyone gets heard and I know that you've prepared something. So I just wanted to give you just a quick two, you have a two full minutes left and then we'll call it a day.
Brian, I appreciate it. And I apologize for being so long. The. Comparison of interest, I think, to board members and other members of the community would be that of six 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 Main Street. And its proximity to fifty-eight Vine Street. There's a significant difference in the distance between those two buildings. And between fifty-one Vine and the plan at sixty-six fifty-four Main Street. There are some other sections that are of interest as well, I think. The elements of form found on page seven twenty-four. Heightened bulk of buildings should be configured to minimize their visual dominance. The extent of cast shadows, essentially fifty-one Vine is going to be unable to take in the southern sun. unable to take in the southern sun because of the size of the building immediately adjacent to it, that's planned. We're supposed to consider bordering neighborhoods when determining the appropriate height. I will leave it at that, Brian, because I know I've already taken too much time. There are certainly more things that I would be interested in saying. Again, my appreciation for Mr. Gillespie and his team for putting forward a plan. I've always been a wage slave and his willingness to take the risk of pursuing this matter, I certainly appreciate. The last thing I would say is that I am a NIMBY, not in my backyard. And unfortunately, maybe fortunately, I'm not sure, most of the rest of you are TGI NIMBYs. In other words, thank goodness it's not in my backyard. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much, John. All right, let's open it up to the planning board. All right, planning board members are-
Everyone's, yep, everyone's unmuted. We have Heather Diab, Heather and Maureen. Who would like to start?
Who would like to go?
Well, I'll start. So I, I agree with a lot of the comments, this is a much improved design. I think it, yeah, so it's a much improved design. The roof on the, the Main Street section does seem to pop up a bit. And I too wondered if that could be made lower. There are a couple of, there's one protrusion above the roof line, which looks really out of place. I'm not sure how to describe. Brian, could you pop up the pictures? Can someone pop up the pictures? I noticed the page numbers are a little different on what we got versus what was displayed. So if you go to like page thirty? Yeah, so you'll notice there's some sort of a structure rising right in the middle, right there, yeah, that puppy. I'm not sure what that is, but it certainly destroys the roof line. So there was a question about that. I also, I don't have a problem with the massing. I know that that's, that's an issue with some people. I also think that we do need commercial space. And I know this board has wavered between saying we need commercial space and we don't need commercial space. I think we do. The only other comment I have is that on the view as you come down Elmwood, and I'm going to try to get to that page, it's one of the first ones, let's see. On ours, it would be page sixteen. Yeah, somehow the, that looks really flat, and maybe it's just the, the way it looks here, but it, it, it seems to be a rather static-looking wall. And here you can see, so I just somehow, if you could liven that up a bit, I think that would look better. And those are my comments, thank you.
Heather Hannan or Maureen Meister, would you like to chime in?
I'll go. I like them, can you hear me?
Please, yes, we can hear you.
I like the materials, I like most of the design, I like the gables on the side. I like the balconies. I like how they're using the historic house. Like Jamie, I like the vertical windows, but it does seem a little odd to have only vertical windows in your house. I mean, like the skinny ones. But I, I do kind of like how it looks. I think the hip roof, it seems a little weird next to the gables, but I, I like the idea of making that front piece a little different, so I don't really have a suggestion. And I appreciated the sections and the street elevations.
All set? Thank you. Let's see, for myself, it's, I think it's heading in the right direction, the scale relative to the street is good. I appreciate the impact, especially parking, we have to deal with that one. And that's not just our issue, we're going to have to work with the select board on that, but the impact on the neighborhood is serious. But I do think that with the historic house being preserved, that that does create a good buffer for the entranceway to the neighborhood. So I'm, yes, exactly. Let's see, the cross gables are great, I love the cross gables. And the, the shed roofs are, I mean, I'm in a house right now under a shed roof, I get shed roofs, but those are, those don't do it. And I did, I was flipping everywhere for the section in the zoning bylaw on dormer seven point three point thirteen point four. Double, yeah, you should look at that. And the last one, subsection five, a dormer must be located a minimum of three feet from the wall plane that runs perpendicular to the dormer face. And we're not getting that, so that's in the zoning bylaw. So let's, there was a reason it was written that way, and I didn't write it, but I think it, it would help a lot. The, on the main block of the development facing Main Street, the roof needs some work, I like hip roofs, but this one, especially on the Main Street elevation, is just, and in fact, everybody is saying too tall, maybe that's it. I would, maybe the, it should be lowered, probably could use some dormers, and it could probably be extended, further out, the actual roof should extend into, further out, with deeper eaves. Those are just some thoughts. The, the floating over the row of windows, maybe it could work, but it's, it's not there. If this is it, I guess my reaction was that it looked like, it looked totally disconnected from the rest of the building in a way that wasn't good. It needed the, what, the top story, what is it, the fourth story, just somehow needed to be attached better to the main, to the main building. But I do want, I would want to see a cornice or some sort of pronounced break after level three, just because of the way it relates to the rest of the street. I do think that we could use that retail, I think the presence of the grocery store is is important to consider, and that with more residents, they will be, certainly the hardware store has already got a business, and the restaurant use is pretty solid and should have a, should have a market, so I think that's fine. And that's it, thank you. Like the materials, like the, especially, I'm sorry, the Elmwood elevation, and the way it wraps around and the way it looked from Main Street toward Elmwood, I think looked quite good. So I'm much happier with that than in the prior presentation. I'm done, thank you.
All right, I guess I'm up. So first of all, I just want to, I also repeat, I've said this before, this is a very, very difficult site to work with and to design with everything that is going on. And you have made tremendous progress since the last time we saw, and thank you so much. The, in really listening to a lot of the feedback that you're getting and incorporating it, with the, with the traffic before anything, I know a lot of, a handful of people mentioned traffic. If this was in an application, I anticipate that I would request a traffic analysis to really know what the true ramifications are of this site and how we can mitigate that or what we can do to support that. So I just, just so the team knows, that's what, where I would probably go with that to address that. So we really know if there is truly problems or concerns that we can deal with it. So I'm going to go through again my list that I, like I did prior to it. When I'm looking at the Main Street elevation, when, a couple of things, the four, the, the four stories, excellent. When you look at the side and you see the hill and you see that there's about two and a half stories remaining, that is the scale of what all of our houses are in Winchester, about forty feet. So when you get to Vine, at Vine level, you're at two and a half stories. So I just, well, you can see it from actually the picture that is currently up right now, the tree's in the way a little bit. But you're, that's, that's one of the reasons is it helps you build to that, to that height that is more residential and feel. And in fact, that three-story multifamily is, you can't see it here, is, is quite a large massing in itself. The, when you look at the Main Street elevation, I have it on page twenty-four, Brian. It's not the, there's a different presentation numbering, that one will do. When you look at it, and Jamie mentioned it, there's a lot of vertical voids. And when you, there's, but then there's on the bottom, you have the rhythm, the really nice rhythm going on with the hardware storefront and the other, and then the, the pilasters. There, if you could group those windows together and make them be more wide, it'll also help shrink the overall feeling, because everything is so vertical in the design on this front facade. It's just a suggestion, it's nothing, that's a make or break, but if you joined those windows and just made them more, you know, put three together, so you have those square with two on the side, you'd get a much more, actually more airy feeling versus the choppy feeling. The, the fourth floor is, when I was looking at, I was trying to figure out what is the void between the top of the third floor windows to the top? And I think what you're doing is you're actually putting a parapet, you're using that as a parapet, which is why it's giving you such a tall height right there. I might be wrong. If that is indeed a parapet and that is a railing that you're using, it's creating a lot of height, which is making it almost feel like the roof, you just want to push it down and put it and like close, close the toy almost. And so if there's a way to work through that fourth story to bring either the roof down and change the angle of it, so it sits on the third and goes up, and you have a fairly large-sized dormers, and then you have balconies cut in. Or, I mean, I'm just, those are just ideas, I haven't sketched anything or looked at anything. It's just different ways to address that top fourth floor, so it doesn't look like it is floating. Also, some of the secondary lines of those windows don't align with anything on the front facade, so they're kind of obscure. And obviously, these are all very nitpicky design things, but it's just things I was looking at. In the, on the side elevation on Elmwood, let's see if, I don't have the right page, so of what's on, what Brian has. Oh yeah, so we'll stop here, so you have a two-story window that looks directly straight on. I would rather see that broken and have a, I like the rest of the dormers and everything versus a two-story. That's the only location where that lies. And then you had mentioned that the front part of the building is going to be a different building than the back. One is more of a different design than the backside. And when you do that, really what you're trying to do is almost create two buildings, two, look of two separate buildings. And so some of your detailing of the joining, which is in plan and stuff, is merging the two, so they're not very clearly defined as two separate, if that makes sense. The, like, the, the corner of the, let's call it the hardware store section is merging in a weird angle, and you have part of it bleeding into, and at least what I could see in the drawings, because you don't actually have a true side elevation, full-on side elevation of there, and my packet. So if you can keep it really defined as the front building and the side building, that, that will help just overall design-wise. There, yeah, I mentioned the chimneys, there's a chimney also. If it's not necessary, it would be great to remove them. If they are necessary, because you're using it for your mechanicals or for whatever you need, then make them look like a chimney. I think you have them right now drawn as metal, but it's also just the way the rendering might be. That's the one that's standing up, that we don't know what it is, but there's also the ones in between that are little chimneys that are made out of metal. Unclear what those are, if you don't need them, you don't need them. But if you do need them, then make them look like chimneys coming through the roof, like more of a traditional chimney coming through. The, it'll be interesting to see when the traffic analysis comes through, what the recommendations are. Vine Street has always had problems with parking on the street. And that, that's something that, I just, I just made a note, that's something that I know Lucy requested. It doesn't come from the planning board, it actually comes from the select board to make Vine Street resident parking only. However, then you're putting strains on the temple that's up there and how they deal with parking and other things. So it's just something that needs to be looked at in more depth. Let's see. Pull the dormers back to meet the dormers, the definition of dormers in the, in the bylaw. That's in the general bylaw, it's not in the specific center business district, the definition of dormers. If you could just meet that, that definition of a dormer for your actual dormers, that would be great. So just pull them back from the face. And I think that's it, I think you are, you've made tremendous progress. When you look, oh, there's one more note I had, my apologies. When you look at Lucy's house versus yours, please look into screening and other things to help support that separation. There's a small area between those two, between her garage and the historical house, but if there are things that can go there to help screen, that, please look into that as well. For your, as you proceed forward. Oh, and one more thing on, sorry, on Vine, looking straight in at the historical house. Where would that be? Yeah. I have it on page. Yeah, so on this one, you have the two balconies. I just go ahead and put another balcony on that third, that third row right there, that's just kind of floating out there, and it looks unfinished. I'd put a balcony there too, if it's, depending on what's going on with your floor plan, if it makes sense. You're losing floor space right there, that would be, that, that might be a benefit based on what's going on inside that area. And would help finish that, so it's not, looks like a floating window cutout. But it might also be the way the rendering is as well, because they don't have an elevation, but that's my feedback. Do you want to unmute Ted? Actually, I can actually unmute Ted. I'm going to unmute you, Ted, in case you have any questions and go from there. So Ted, you are unmuted?
Sure, no, thank you. I just think one question that came up a few times, and before I respond to that, I just want to begin by saying thank you very much for your feedback, this was tremendously helpful. And really, I thank you. And I know it's late, so I'll be very brief. The one question that came up often was, if, can you see my mouse? What is this sloping? Brian, can I have control of the the thing, and I can point to that a little bit better, or do you want to-
You would have, we'd have to start a new screen share, but I-
Oh no, don't worry about it.
So we're talking about this piece here.
Yeah, and maybe that roof, so what we've done is, and we can show you that another time, is that behind that roof, we've depressed a mechanical zone about four feet down. And that is the stair access, which is required by code to get to the roof. So it's an extension of the stair to, to the roof level. And maybe I can show you on the floor plan. I just want to be able to just explain that one question. Other than that, I didn't, I know that there were a lot of very good feedbacks, and I'd like to take the hard, particularly working on the Main Street roof line and its height and its relationship to the brick wall, parapet wall. And that also leads to another question, I think that Heather, you may have had. That is the parapet for the recessed deck areas to provide privacy? So in that zone there, we've recessed some open space for the units, and in order to create more screening from the public view areas, you know, that was the idea. I also want to understand a little bit more about the dormers, and we'll- Uh, I also want to understand a little bit more about the dormers and we'll work through those in the setbacks from the roof, roof line and, and study that. As well as the, uh, really working on some of the detailing at the ground level and the pedestrian way, and I think that's going to come in time. Uh, as well as the brick detailing. And, uh, we've worked very hard, particularly along Elmwood, uh, to work through some of the gables and the dormers and the materials. I also like some of the comments and we'll continue to advance those around making those two buildings more distinct. Maybe in their color and their, their roof line and, and work through that connection that occurs between the two. And I think, Heather, you may have had a question about, you know, the odd connectivity there, and I think it's centered around. Circulation that's going to allow us to have one elevator core that can serve both buildings, and that's really an economic response. But I think we can, uh, work on the material connections and the details that minimize the visible, um, connection there.
Yeah, I'm talking more about the skin than the actual functionality.
Yeah.
The white bleeding onto the other building, um, in your rendering, so that's where is, is on the backside where it steps in. Where you, right here where the person's standing. Right in there, in the little inset next to the other garage, and you have the inset, right there in your renderings, you have the white that is on the back building on the backside of this building. So it's almost bleeding into versus that brick and then start, you'll see it right in there.
Yeah, that's definitely a rendering issue, and I think we'll work.
It was or was, I just wanted to make sure that, so the top, the, the front building with the, you know, with the, we'll calm, I, I don't know how to, with the roof. Right, that that reads as a separate building in the way that it's designed and you don't have a white bleed. Um, I actually think the two buildings are reading differently, um, and you were talked about different materials and that would be worked out at a different time. I do think they are reading differently already. I just, they, just when you go to do that detailing is to really, if you're going for that too. If your roof line going and bedding into there, you want it to read as two separate buildings, as if they were built separately, but all the programming inside can, you know, intercha, interchange and twine and stuff. If that's your, what your intention was, that's, it was just, uh, it was more of a discussion on design with you versus.
No, I think that's a great, that's a great point, and it's going to really make the buildings reading more clearly and, uh, we'll continue to work through that. And.
I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but I believe we are going to get kicked off in maybe one to two minutes, this meeting was set until ten thirty and we're past that. So I have a feeling we might, the meeting might stop any minute.
Okay.
Can I jump in if I get cut off, I get cut off. At some point fairly soon, we should be considering what's going on inside, and I do think there may be an argument for more one bedrooms, um, than two bedrooms. First of all, there, they'll be less expensive, the, um, building on the screen right now on the left on Elmwood is all two bedrooms, as I recall. Uh, an advantage of one bedrooms is they're more likely to bring in people who only have one car. When you go to two bedrooms, you'll get couples who will, uh, come in with two cars. So I, I just think even if you're adding a couple more units, you probably will in the end end up with fewer cars.
More in, uh, Maureen, I think that's a great point, and I probably should have pointed out the distribution of the units. So we worked really hard along that topic, I think was brought up in earlier planning board comments, so currently we have twenty-nine one-bedroom.
Oh, good, okay.
Nine two-bedroom units, and so I, I agree wholeheartedly with your comment around the unit distribution. And I think there's a great opportunity to make these really, uh, special, small, but compact and well, uh, functioning, uh, one-bedroom units.
There's a market, um, divorced people and younger, like twenty-five, thirty-five years old. And then along those lines, we do want to make sure we've got adequate bike storage, because that will be the younger buyer.
Yeah, and I think we're looking just along that question too, we're looking at putting bike storage either in the units or in the courtyard outside or potentially in the lobby areas. And these are just details that are going to get themselves worked out, but we see a market for bike storage and really making it a part of the, the livelihood of Winchester. So yes, agreed to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, Ted.
Thank you both, thank you everyone, thank you the board and the comments from the public.
Do you have any comments to clean as before we, um, we stop?
Who, me? No.
Uh, Ian.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, thank you very much to the board, uh, I, I'd also like to thank Brian S. Kelly and Dennis Carlon, who have worked, uh, very hard with us on this. And, uh, I must say, uh, Maureen's comments about the sixty-three Vine, I think have resulted in a, uh, a, a really lovely. A lovely setting for that building, so we're celebrating that building now rather than taking it down, so I think that works well for everybody.
Thank you very much, Ian. Um, all right, so we're going to conclude, um, with these two, um, before we, um, adjourn. Is there anything the planning board wants to touch base on before we proceed, um, to our beds? Anything?
No.
Just to remind everybody, um, and Heather, I sent a, I did send a draft just to Heather, um, of a letter to the Historical Commission. But we have actually, I think now, we're looking at three different projects that could, um, where the zoning and the recommendations to ZBA or our own. Will, uh, be involved with historic buildings, so we've got, uh, the one on Main Street, which was the, uh, impetus for writing the letter. But then as a follow-up, we also have a project on, um, uh, Grove Street. And that one, maybe that's just probably a site plan review as, uh, Brian suggested. But even so, we ought to be, the Historical Commission will want, be wanting to think about that, and we will have some input on site plan review to this, in that case, it would be ZBA. But then the third one is, uh, we've just learned about Niles Lane, and that's pretty complicated. And if there's going to be a subdivision proposed, I think we want to get ahead of it and be prepared. Uh, because that too will involve the property that is going to be in front of the Historical Commission. So this idea of coordinating more, uh, closely, uh, is, I think, really important, so that the issues relating to zoning, um, are merged with the interest in historic preservation. But Heather, I trust you've got the draft and everybody should know I did draft something as you requested.
Yeah, uh, it just wasn't available to make it to this meeting, so in our next few meetings, um, we will, we have the hearing, we will go over, um, the Historical Commission letter. Cause, um, we have to review that as a board, um, for it to be sent out, but from the board. And we are going to review the special permit fee, Brian is collect, doing research right now to get all that information, um, in case we need to modify that. And, and also is a special permit fee and which other one, I can't, I'm blanking, Brian or Maureen. Oh, subdivision fee, there we go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Everything, that would include ANRs too, by the way.
Yeah, um, so Brian's looking on that, we're working on it, um, and, um, gathering all the data to use that to provide us a recommendation of what it should be changed to, if it should be changed. Um, and then obviously, we have our meeting minutes as well that we'll continue to do. And, um, after town meeting ends, um, we'll start working on getting, putting together what, how we're going to proceed with the master plan, um. Implementation committee.
And also, um, follow up on that, for the board, I, you know, we, I, some of us, I certainly did pick up the print copies for tonight's meeting. I would really appreciate now a print copy of the master plan that we've adopted.
Sure, uh, we can arrange that, I believe Suzanne Gill has been doing some of those on request, so that certainly makes sense.
Brian, can we go back to door drops of our packets? It was halted in the beginning, because there was such, there was such a.
Yeah, um.
We go back to having those delivered again?
Yeah, Suzanne can talk to the police about that.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah.
I think the last thing to mention is, uh, and we could call it a night, um, is that the Conservation Commission is meeting on May twenty-sixth. They have invited us to start the conversation about the tree bylaw that we would go for an hour, but it's there, we would be going to their meeting, we would be there for an hour and we would leave. I'm going to send an email about that, that was more of just a heads up that we're definitely meeting next week, that is the hearing. We're going to be doing some business and that CONCOM has invited us for the twenty-sixth, no one needs to say anything, I'm going to send an email, just a heads up.
Okay, I think I can do it.
And then last request, um, uh, we did ask Brian if you could, again, we, I don't, we're not looking for, uh, even paragraphs, we're just looking for, uh, name, um, employer or whatever, or company representing. And just the big ones where, or what you would, we would understand if you're having a, a quote-unquote, it's remote now meeting, just so we don't get surprised, as we have been. So it was a surprise to learn you'd already met with the people from Grove Street, for example. Uh, and then we, we just should know that these are, you know, these are happening.
So those are going, Brian, in your, in your Friday meeting?
Yeah, they've been going in there, yeah.
Okay. Maureen, are, are you, did you want more than what's in there or?
I thought it would be, I'm just, I, I guess I'm not looking somewhere that I wasn't aware I was supposed to look at something.
Oh, no, I've just been, any, any meetings that I've been having about anything, I've been putting in my weekly updates, so whether someone's coming in for a potential development, probably, I've just been putting all those in the weekly update.
So, uh, okay, I get the weekly updates, I guess there, I would have thought there was more in a, in a week, but, um. Anyway, that, if, that's where it's going, that's the right place, thank you.
Okay, um. Okay, um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else, I, my brain is starting to get.
Well, we're, we are expecting to hire a recording secretary, and I just don't know whether that just will go by naturally, it'll all, we'll get her on board? Or if that's going to take a little bit of reminding HR?
Yeah, no, I've sent, uh, the necessary recommendation form to get to her on the payroll and, um, I can do another nudge, but that, that was, that was sent, um, the beginning of this week.
Um, and when that all comes through and it's official, um, can you send, um, or, um. Maybe Maureen, actually, you might be the best, is to send your favorite ones?
Yeah, there were.
They have copies of them, if you didn't do it in your interviews, make sure they get copies of your favorite ones, so the same layout, format, content, general, you know, how much content of our discussion is in there. So she can just model it or he can model it.
Well, I think, um, we agreed that we'd send some of Liz's, that Brian could do that, I think that's great, actually, they should be posted. But anyway, I, we'll work, we can work that out, but the other thing was just, if Brian, could you just follow up? Because I know it's sit, sitting on a volunteer's shoulders to make sure the Historical Commission is moving forward with hiring their recording secretary?
Yes, they were just waiting for the, here, the, um, notice to close, which I believe just blows the two weeks, so, um, but yes, I can talk to the Historical Mission again, make sure they're on the right schedule.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Um, do we need to discuss it?
Yes.
Little humor.
Favor roll call, please.
Yeah, Maureen, I.
Curious, I.
Heather, I.
Heather Von Mary, I. For a vote to adjourn, my meeting is adjourned, thank you everyone for all of your time and your patience while we go through Zoom. And hopefully sometime in the near future, we will be back and you can see our lovely faces, um, inside Town Hall. So, uh, wish everyone the best and have a good evening.